Okay. Good evening, calling to order the October 7th meeting of the South Borough Select. First item on agenda is public comment. And this is an opportunity for members of the public who want to offer a comment on an item that's not on the agenda to do so, and we try to keep public comments at three minutes and it's not intended as a back and forth, but just as an opportunity for comment. So with that said, is there anyone who wishes to speak under public comment? Okay. With that, um, the next item on our agenda is a presentation from Tim Ts of PAR. PAR are our water consultants. And the reason why we asked Tim to come together with Bill, our Bill Conduff, the DPW superintendent, is that one of the articles on the warrant for the special town meeting on October 27th is asking town meeting to appropriate $100,000 to prepare the engineering for a bid package to begin the remediation of the old water tower parcel on Atwood Road. So with that, I'll turn it over to two of you.
I'm gonna kick it right over to Tim. Um, you know, we learned of this as a result of an exploration for affordable housing on the property. I'll just give you a real brief overview of the, the, the ownership history. We acquired that property, the town residents in the town of South Borough acquired the property in 1930. The, the, the water tower was built in 1932. Um, and as you know, at that time, the water department was funded and operated exclusively within the tax base. The tank was demolished in 1992. And, um, and the enterprise fund, which basically distinguished the funding source for the water department was established in FY 2020. So at no point was the enterprise fund the source, which, which means the water users. So currently the water system is operated solely on user feeds. Historically, it was not, it was operated on the tax base. So all the decisions that were made were basically townwide voters. I just wanted to give that little intro. With that, I'll, I'll kick, kick it over to Tim.
And good evening. Uh, so we were engaged about a year and a half ago to investigate if lead from the old water tower, lead paint from the old water tower had uh impacted soil beneath the water tank. Uh, we went out back in July of 2024. We did a fairly extensive investigation of the property, particularly the, the soil directly beneath the tank. And we found that in fact, the lead paint from the tank had fallen off into the soil as we had suspected. Um, and left some fairly significant concentrations of lead uh in that soil, specifically directly beneath the tank. I'm happy to go through any of the data if you want. I have some photos that um I sent over uh that we can look at that show the old tank. If you're interested in seeing the construction of the old tank. Um, and then I have some figures that show the sampling that we did, so you can get a sense of the, the impacts underneath the tank. Maybe we can pull up the photos first and I can walk you through the what the tank used to look like. Yeah, could you do the ones of the tank? Thank you. While those are being pulled up and I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about the tank. So the tank was a steel tank. It was about 130 feet tall. Uh, so here's a photo. Uh, you can see in this photo just the top of it. These were taken during the demolition process. So you can see that the storage vessel was at the top of the tank. That center column from the center of the tank down, that was the, uh, that was the pipe essentially that brought the water up to the storage vessel. And then the tank itself was supported by four legs. When they took the tank down, maybe we can stop on this photo for a second. When they took the photo down, I mean, excuse me, when they took the tank down, the way they did it is they actually cut out a piece of that center pipe that went up to the center of the tank. Uh, and they cut out one of the legs. They removed a section of one of the legs and then they pulled the tank down onto the ground. Right? If you imagine like a big tree coming down in the woods, that's kind of what this tank would have looked like when it was coming down. Uh, the tank, you can see in this photo here, you can see some rusting on the tank. You can see where the tank has been partially recoded at the bottom. Um, so this, this tank had about 60 years of, of paint on it. Uh, like it was built in the 1930s, it came down in the, in the early 1990s. So I had about 30 years of paint on it. Uh, it was painted originally at a time where lead paint was very, very common. Um, and it was probably painted, um, in its lifetime, it was probably painted one or more additional times in the field, meaning they probably stripped the paint off and repainted it. Um, it's typical on, on a steel tank to paint it every 20 to every 15 to 20 years. So it's likely that this, this uh tank had been stripped of its paint and then repainted. Um, and a lot of that, you know, back in the day when they would repaint tanks, there weren't a lot of brake controls, right? So a lot of that, that lead paint was allowed just to fall to the ground. Um, you know, this is back in the, the 30s, 40s, 50s, it was just allowed to fall to the ground. So this is the tank as it fell down. It, it fell down in the field uh adjacent to where it used to, it used to exist. Maybe we can scroll to the next photo, you can see a couple of other photos of it coming down. Again, this is it before it was pulled down. I think you can see at the bottom, if you stop for one sec, you can see where they cut uh one of the legs out on the left-hand side to pull it down. And we keep going. This is what it looked like. It's a fairly sizable tank. This is what it looked like up close after it came down. Like I said, it sat on four uh concrete uh pads. It had four legs, each pad sat on a, on a concrete, each leg, excuse me, sat on a concrete pad. Those concrete pads, as far as we can tell, still exist, they're still out there, they're just buried uh under some soil. And if you look closely, it's, it's a little hard to tell, but you can see um where the tank, you can see kind of where the, where the legs used to come out and you can see that they are lower um in, in elevation than the rest of the, the grade around it. The tank essentially sat in a, in a hole, there was a small hole, uh like a depression in the site where the tank uh was constructed. And that's important because we believe that when they demoed the tank, um, they didn't regrade the site, they brought in fill to fill that hole so that the site would be fairly uniform um in, in topography. Um, why that's important is um some of the highest concentrations of lead that we found are not at the surface, they're actually down about 12 inches because that's what the surface used to be when the tank existed. Uh, and then they put clean fill on top of it. So then if we go to the next, um, I guess we have one more here. Oh yeah, you can see here too where they cut out the, uh, the bottom, the, the center stand pipe that took the water up to the top of the tank. So they removed the leg and part of that pipe. And then just another photo. Yep, that's the tank down. Can we go to the other slide deck? So what we did, so back in February of last year, we went out, we did four preliminary samples uh just to see if there was an impact, to see if there was an obvious impact. And what we did first is we looked for the legs of the tank. We looked for those concrete pads that the tank sat on and we were able to find them. We did a little bit digging around the site, we were able to find them. So we were able to establish exactly where the tank had been uh back in, you know, back before it was demoed. And we collected samples directly beneath it and those initial samples, we collected about four initial samples. So this figure you have uh here in front of you is the sampling plan. I think I have a pointer somewhere here. Maybe not. Nope, I left my pointer at home. So there are four, it's a little hard to see, but there are four red dots um around the yellow dot in the center. Those four red dots were the initial samples we did. Those were right directly beneath the tank, sort of in between each of the legs. And those confirmed for us what we thought, which was that the soil was, was impacted with lead. Uh, there's also a small, a couple of small red dots out in the field. We did those samples at the same time. We went out in the field and, and sampled the soil because when they tore the tank down, like I said, they brought it down like it was a tree, right? And that tank, when it hit the ground, probably shed some of the paint that was on it. Uh, so we went out in the field and we sampled and we found a little bit of lead out there, but not, not much. The rest of this plan, the rest of these dots, the green dots um were the subsequent sampling we did. That's the grid that we sampled directly beneath the tank. That's a 10 by 10 grid. So at every green dot, we did five samples at varying depths. The, the purple dots or the magenta dots, that, those are sample sites as well. Those are just spaced a little bit further apart, right? As we get further from the tank, the lead impacts are, are expected to be less. So we, we increased the spacing between the samples. So those are spaced at 30 feet apart. The blue dots at the bottom, uh, those are uh the samples we did on the, on the neighbor's property, the closest neighbor to the tank. And then there's sort of this uh wedge, this sort of pizza shaped um green hatch that goes from the tank sort of north. You can kind of see it underneath the, the hatch pattern there. What that is, that is the, the likely area that the, the tank came down, right? We don't know the exact spot where they dropped it, nobody mapped it when they were out there. Uh, we just have photos to go by, but based on, you know, the vegetation that's out there and based on what we looked at in the photos, we think that's the likely area where it, where it came down. Um, is that, that's sort of that wedge shaped area, excuse me. So this is all the sampling we did, we wound up doing about 520 samples here. In the green spots, we sampled at six inch intervals um over five feet. So we did zero to six inches down, we did uh 12 to 18 inches down, we did 24 to 30. Uh, we did 36 to 42, and then we did 48 to 54. And so we did them in five intervals, six inches each. And then out in the field, we did, we did six inch intervals as well, but we didn't do them as, as deep. I think we only went about two feet out in the field because again, we didn't expect a lot out in the field. It was really underneath the tank that was, that was important um at the time. We go to the next slide, maybe? So this is, so every level that we sampled, every depth, we categorize it A, B, C, D, and E, right? So the shallowest samples that we did were at, were at A. And you can see on this, so these samples here, these are essentially at the surface. This is the top six inches of topsoil. The green samples, the green dots represent samples that we collected where the concentration was very low. It was um below the state background, right? So very low concentrations. The samples that are sort of an orangish-yellow color, those concentrations came back between the, the uh background concentration for the state and the state's cleanup standard. So they're in the range of about 100 to 200 parts per million. That's what the orange samples represent. The red samples are samples that came back, the red dots are samples that came back above the state cleanup standard of 200 parts per million. So you can see there's a lot of red dots. You can see curiously that there's a lot of green dots directly underneath the tank. And again, that's because we believe they brought in clean fill to fill the depression that was there. Now, we did find along sort of the edges outside of the tank, you see those bright red boxes. Um, the they're a little hard to distinguish on the screen, but the two on the right, the big one and then the smaller one on the right, those are where the concentrations came back very, very high and they, they exceeded what we call the T-clip level for lead, which means that if we were to dig those up and try to take them off-site for disposal, they would fall into a classification of, of hazardous waste. So we would have to, the cost for that goes way up to get rid of hazardous waste. Um, the two on the left, you know, sort of the bottom one and the one on the left, they're a little bit, not quite as bright red. Those came back very, very high for lead, over 1,000 parts per million, but they did not exceed the T-clip threshold. So they, even though they came back very high for lead, they were not, they would not be considered hazardous waste if we dug them up. Go to the next slide, please. So this is the, the B sample. So this is about, these samples were collected 12 inches to 18 inches down. And you can see again, green is very clean, the orange is in that, that sort of marginally impacted area where it's between the state background concentration and the state's cleanup standard. And then red is uh above the, the state cleanup standard. And we had three spots here, we didn't have a lot of red dots here, but we did have three spots that, that had very high concentrations that would exceed a hazardous waste threshold if we were to dig these up and take them off-site. Um, if you keep going to the next slide, this is the C horizon. And you can see our concentrations now, the, the area of impact is really tightening up to just beneath the tank. Right? And so you can see directly beneath the tank, we have very high concentrations of lead. Um, and that's, again, that's what we would expect, that's where the center stand pipe was, right? So you have lead paint coming off of that. Uh, the bowl, it's all within the drip line, so the water would shed off the bowl when it rains, it would shed off that bowl and it would drip right down into that, into that blue circle right there, that's the drip line. So that's, this is really where we would expect the highest concentrations of lead. And we're really getting into now where the old ground surface was, right? That's why they're really concentrated right here. But you can see um outside of uh the blue drip line, we got a lot of clean samples, a lot of very clean samples, right? Next slide, please. When we got to the D horizon and the D horizon now is, I think, um, it's our fourth one down, so that's, I think, 36 to 42 inches. We only had one sample that came back elevated, everything else came back clean. And then the very last slide, you can see that red dot turned into a, a yellow dot. So at, at 54 inches, it's below the state cleanup standard, but it's, it's not quite background yet, right? So we, we feel very good about the um about the delineation, about understanding what the impacts are to the site. Uh, and now the next step is to develop a remedial plan to clean this up. I'll open it up to questions if anybody has questions.
And so the town meeting appropriation is to work on this specs to put this out to bid to begin the remediation.
Correct. So the, the town meeting appropriation is to, is to take it beyond the investigation, develop that remedial plan and then get the project out to bid for cleanup. Now, what goes into that um remedial plan is there's a risk assessment that has to be done to identify exactly the, the, the limits of excavation, exactly what it is we want to excavate and take off-site, right? And that we do with a risk assessor. They look at the data, they analyze the data based on the use of the site, potential future use of the site and they say, alright, this is where we think, these are the, these are the areas that we think should come off-site, right? We do that, we do that in conjunction with a site survey, we have the, 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 the site surveyed, so we can put plans together. Then we develop plans and then we develop technical specifications to remove that, that soil. Now, those red boxes that I showed you that have the hazardous waste levels of lead, those are going to need to be stabilized onsite before they can leave, right? If we ship them off-site as hazardous waste, the cost to get rid of them is tremendous. Um, but if we stabilize them first, meaning that we mix them with certain compounds, certain chemicals um to stabilize the lead so that the lead can't come out, we can get rid of that soil at a much lower price.
Do you know how long a remediation process typically takes?
So for a project like this, uh, on this scale to, to, once the contractor shows up onsite, this shouldn't be more than a four to six week project, right? It's not a huge amount of excavation, I mean, it's not small, but it's not a huge amount of excavation. But that stabilization process takes time, right? They have to very, very carefully go through, they, they dig up a little bit, they mix it with these different compounds, whether it be Portland cement or mactite or other, other polyphosphorus-based compounds. Uh, they mix that, then they, they resample that, they put them in small piles, they sample those piles to make sure that the lead is in fact stabilized and then they ship it off-site. So it's this sort of repetitive process, you know, doing the same thing over and over and over again. Um, and like I said, on a site this size, it shouldn't take more than, you know, four to six weeks to get through that process. And then once they're done, we would bring clean fill back onsite to backfill the excavation, so there's not just a hole left on the site.
Okay, anyone on the board have questions? I agree.
Uh, how far down is the bedrock, do you know?
I don't know. I don't know. We didn't, we did not encounter bedrock in any of our sampling. That's not true, we encountered bedrock in a couple of samples. Uh, we think it might have been a boulder that we hit, but at our deepest sample, which was about 54 inches down, we, we didn't hit that rock.
Okay, and my other question, are there any, is there any way that that would flow into water?
That's a good question. So it is possible at these concentrations, it is possible, right? That the lead could leach out of the soil and down into groundwater. And that's what I had mentioned earlier, this T-clip analysis, it's called a toxicity characteristic leaching procedure. And what that really analyzes is the potential that this lead could leach out of soil um into groundwater. And so we found some concentrations of that that were very high, that would suggest that there's a high leaching potential. But if you, if you can back up maybe two slides, um, so for example, in this slide right here, you can see that there's a very high leaching potential for that soil, right, in the red boxes. But if you go one more slide, you can go to the, the next slide, uh, I'm sorry, the other direction, thank you. You can see that the soil beneath those red spots is more or less clean, right? So while the potential exists that it could leach, we didn't see evidence of it when we were out there. The soil, the soil beneath the hottest spots that we found was more or less clean. Yep.
So Tim, um, I learned something tonight that I didn't understand. So the lead was caused from two things, the tank coming down maybe, right? Um, but also from the repainting over the years and the scraping to, to, to repaint it. So two, two things caused the lead.
Potentially, yes, yep.
Okay, so now back, sort of piggybacking on Andrew's question, so the article that we've got on the warrant tonight that we're going to um finalize and, and sign, um, has 100K in it, um, 85 for what Andrew was talking about, but we've got 15K to also do what you put in your report as temporary um safety measures to?
Correct, so what those temporary safety measures are, essentially you have right now, you have lead at the surface, right? You have lead in the zero to six inch um strata. And we think, now that we know this is here, we think that that should be addressed on the, in the short term, really in the immediate term. But that can be as simple as just putting down what we call filter fabric, right? Which is, if any of you have been to a construction site, it's basically black fabric and, and then putting either crushed stone or mulch or gravel on top of that to, to keep it down. It's essentially just creating a, a temporary barrier until the, the final remediation can be done.
And 15K we think is the right number for that?
Uh, yeah, I think it's a reasonable amount. It's not a huge amount of work. Again, the, the material costs are not overly significant, it's just filter fabric and then um gravel.
So October 27th is the vote. Um, so that means the money will be available in October 28th, so we can get it done pretty quickly after that, is that the, the plan?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay, so quick, a week, two weeks, three weeks?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's something that, that the town could do with their own forces if they, if they wanted. Again, it's, it's like, what we would do is we would go out there and we would stake out the spots that we want to see covered. And then again, it's just putting filter fabric down and putting stone on top of it.
All right, so we can get it done before the winter easily, right? So that, that part would be done.
And then would the, the, the fabric would go down a certain?
No, it would go right on the surface.
Right on the surface.
Right on the surface, yep. Yep, our intent is not to, with this immediate measure, it's not to dig anything up, it's not to remove anything, it's just to create a barrier between what's on the surface now.
Okay, so now back to the 85K question that Andrew was asking about. So we've had questions from various people about how we're going to remediate it. There have been questions, are you going to cap it? Are you going to remove it? So it sounds like the plan is to remove the soil?
That's what's contemplated right now is to remove at least the hottest spots onsite. Now, you could cap it, okay? But if you cap it, you were still left with a site that has very high concentrations of lead on it and you have to manage that site in perpetuity, right? And that means that you have to manage the cap, you have to make sure the cap is, its integrity is maintained, again, in perpetuity. Um, and then if you ever wanted to do something with this site, right? And whatever it might be, you would have to take that cap into consideration, which means if, say you want to do passive recreation, you can probably do that on a cap. Say you want to do more active recreation or you wanted uh to put the site up for auction for some other use, like housing or something like that, you're going to have to remove all that soil in the future, right? You're not going to be able to-
But the plan is not to design it two ways, the plan is to design it one way, right?
Correct.
And that's what 85K is for. And so you're assuming that the way we're going to go is to remove the soil and replace it with clean soil, not cap it.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, you agree, Bill, that is the way to go?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so does everybody agree that's what we're going to do versus? So in other words, we're not asking you to come up with five different ways to do this, you're going to do it one way. Um, but someone's got to tell you which way to do it and I assume that Mr. Conduff is going to say, I want you to do it this way, which is take that soil out and replace it with clean soil.
So there's a little bit of nuance to it. So what we're going to do within that 85K is we're going to do that risk analysis. And that risk analysis is going to point us to the areas that we want to excavate, right? So the option that we have priced out in our report is to remove everything onsite right now that is above the state background, right? Essentially leaving the town with a, a clean site with no lead above the state background. The risk assessment that we're going to do is going to say, okay, if you, if you remove these hotspots and you remove a little bit more over here, or maybe a little bit more over here, you can get the average concentration of the site down below some cleanup threshold. You will still have lead on the property, right? You will still have to manage that in the future, but it'll get it down to a point where the risk is minimized. The cost difference between doing that, which we call option two, and just removing everything that's over 100, um, the cost difference, we don't know yet. We won't know that until we do the risk analysis. So after we do the risk analysis, we're going to come back to the town and we're going to say, we have these two options. This one costs this, this one costs another price. And if you do option one, you have no lead, lead left on the site. If you do option two, you're going to have this amount of lead left on the site, but you'll probably be able to do it for less cost. So we're going to come back with those two options, not five options on town, it's just two options um for the town to consider.
And the 85K covers you being able to come back with that?
Correct.
Okay, so how long, once you, so the funding again would be, if it passes, it's got to pass. If it passes, funding would be available October 28th because the way we're funding this. Um, and how long then would it take for you to come back with the um risk assessment and the two options?
Uh, probably, probably about two months. So we have to get the risk assessor on board, right? We've got to hire the risk assessor, um, have them do their analysis and then we have to take their analysis and price it out. Now, that's not overly complicated, but it does take a little bit of time. So we're thinking probably about two months to do that.
So when you come back, you'll have the cost of option one and option two, at least an estimate of both?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yep.
So is this a possible article for the?
Well, that's where I'm going, I think it sounds like it is. Okay, so if we, we're going to talk about tonight, timing, right, as far as, you know, town meeting. So let's assume we do it the last part of March, it sounds like we'd have time to get the bids out, once the option's picked, right? To bring the article to town meeting, then to, to, to get it approved and then get the work started shortly thereafter if it's approved?
So you're talking about getting the, the construction dollars approved at the Springtown meeting, which is?
It could be last week in March, could be the first week in April.
April. Yeah, I mean, that sounds reasonable. That sounds reasonable.
Okay, then once that's approved, um, and the bid's out and we've accepted the bid, how long would it take to actually do? So that's where it's not going to take that long to, to do this for?
Right, so the, the, once the funds are approved, right? We sign the notice to proceed with the contractor. And again, it'll probably take them a couple of weeks to mobilize, right? They got to get all their equipment and gear ready. And then like I said, it's probably a four to six week um activity for them and then maybe a couple of weeks for restoration. So you're talking, you know, spring into early summer to do the work?
All right, thank you.
Well? Um, so the, the question I have, which is the one I've had all, all along, i- is the source of funding. And I do not believe that it is appropriate to use free cash for this purpose. I'm fully in favor of doing this, we need to clean this up. Um, I believe that it should come out of the Water Enterprise Fund. And the reason I say that is that um the free cash is essentially, it comes out of all of the taxpayers' pockets. However, only a subset of the residents in town actually are served by our water system. There are significant communities, including the neighborhood I live in, that have never had access to the South Borough water system. And they are being asked to pay for a problem that was a direct result of the operation of the South Borough water system. I have neighbors, for example, who get their water from Framingham, so they pay into the Framingham system. They have to pay for, you know, the maintenance and any cleanups involved in the Framingham system. And so it's inappropriate to ask them to pay for a system for which they have no access. They have no fire protect, we, you know, in, in my neighborhood and, and other neighborhoods in town have no fire protection from hydrants. They have no uh access to the town water system. So I believe that the proper source of funding, and again, this should be done, I'm fully in favor of doing it, is simply that the uh funds should come from the Water Enterprise Fund rather than uh the general fund, which is where the, the free cash is, is, is developed.
Ella, if I can just answer that quickly, the schools use town water. Townhouse, all the public buildings in town use town water. It seems to me that there's almost no one in this town that isn't impacted by town water at some point.
But if, if you're arguing that because, I, I filled my flask up at home, by the way. That, you know, I once took a sip from the town water fountain and so as a consequence, I'm, I'm on the hook for this when it- That, you know, I once took a sip from the town water fountain, and so as a consequence, I'm, I'm on the hook for this when it is, is, forgive me, but patently absurd, uh, you know.
So can I disrespectfully suggest that I think these people, that people who are here are not here to talk about how we fund it? They're more talking about.
What I was going to suggest is, Tim hasn't had a chance to ask any questions yet. So first we go to Tim. Then we'll see if anyone from the audience has questions. And then we can, I think we already discussed it before, but when we get to later on the agenda, finalizing the warrant, um, I'll look back and see, did we take a vote on this article?
We did not, we, no, we did not.
Then we'll take a vote and we'll decide at that.
We didn't decide this question.
Out of respect for people here, I think, have questions, let's, so, Tim?
So the immediate, um, cover, uh, what's the risk of not doing that? The property's been sitting as it is for a while now, and if we would fund something like this in the spring, what's the difference that six-ish months might make in the risk level?
I mean, that's a good question. You never know what's going to happen in the future. We have a well-laid out plan right now, but if that got derailed for some reason, six months maybe turns into some, you know, twelve months, eighteen months. The risk is generally low right now because the, the site is fairly well vegetated, right? Like it's got grass that grows over it, so the soil is not loose. What we don't want to do is we don't want people up there. Really, the, the exposure risk is if people are up there interacting with the soil, right? Digging it up, um, you know, really the, the risk exposure is, is ingestion, right? If people are digging up, putting, getting it on their hands, putting their hands near their mouth, right? We, we want to avoid that. And so the best thing to do is just create a barrier where people can't get to the soil. If nobody's up there, if nobody's interacting with that soil, the, the risk is generally pretty low. Uh, but again, you know, I, I can't see the future.
What's?
But it's just fifteen K.
Just to add, so to add some context to this, right? The, the, the fieldwork that you did, that was done on, how, like a year ago or so, or?
We did the sampling back in, uh, July of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so I just mentioned that because, you know, there's already been like over a year that has passed since we made these observations and known that, you know, they've already triggered certain cleanup standards. So I think it is appropriate, we continue to move forward.
Well, it's only fifteen K, so it's not a huge amount of money. We've got a neighbor, we've got neighbors who would like to see us do, they, they read the report and said, you said, do this, so we're just following what you said. But, Tim, I'll give you the real risk. So do we, now I'm really going to put you on the spot. Is this a seven-figure cleanup cost?
It could be if.
So you're assuming it's going to pass town meeting the first time, and it may not. So then you delay it further. So that's why I think, I mean, it's just fifteen K, let's just do it. You said to do it. Um, I think the neighbors will feel better and, um, move on.
All right, Sarah?
I'm at twenty-seven Atwood, I live across the street. I am actually talking about.
Your name, too?
Sarah, oh, you said Sarah, so I said Sarah Warden at twenty-seven Atwood. My concern is if we argue about if this becomes a water, who pays for it? It won't pass that town meeting. I just want this to keep going, moving forward. It makes me really concerned that it could be polarizing, divisive, if we start saying it's going to come from the water and who uses water. I'm just nervous about it. So that's my one, just quick comment. And my other comment is I've had to physically stop people from going up there. There's no signage. There was a grandmother and a son on little dirt bike type things, and I stopped them and I said, don't go up there, there's exposed lead. So I'd like if we could put some kind of barrier. I can't always stop everyone, I'm not always home. So if we could move forward with the fifteen thousand just to put that on there. I know it's been sitting there for a year, but it still makes me nervous, and I just want people to be safe, so. That's it, there's no questions.
I have a question. Uh, Mike Sapansky, one eighty-five, Quarterville. Tim, uh, have you guys looked into any grants from federal to see if they'll do lead cleanup? Uh, no, we have not, actually. We've not looked into, into any grants. There's some new programs out there, so you should look into it. I think that could be in action, um, to table us at least one more meeting, and then if you come back, then ultimately it might put us in a better spot because we're not worried about where funding's coming from. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, are there any other questions for, for Tim while we have him? All right, Bill, anything you want to add?
No, I just, uh, I don't know how deep I want to get into this, but, um, I want to reiterate the Enterprise Fund has only been around since twenty twenty. We do take extensive, um, time and detail to set the rates and the retained earnings that would be, that are being proposed to be accessed by Al. Our model for the rates is based upon that twenty percent retained earnings, earnings level. And if we're dropping that, obviously, the impact is we're going up on the rates. Um, I want to, again, underscore the fact that this whole situation occurred when the tax base funded the entire project from start to finish. The tank was long gone before the reduced, uh, water users, um, took over.
Okay.
Andrew, are we going, is Bill staying for the later discussion?
Um, well, that's, that's where I was headed.
Okay, sorry.
Um, okay, so we have an agenda, item on the consent agenda about DPW recommendation and authorized mass dot install stone caps on Main Street. So before we let you go, Tim, this is something that's, uh, you don't need to stay for.
Thanks, Tim.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yep, happy to do it.
Okay, uh, does anyone have any questions for Bill while he's here with us on that?
So that's not my question. Is Bill going to stay while we actually vote on how we're going to fund the hundred K? Do you want to say anything else than what you just said?
Uh, basically, that's it in a nutshell. The, uh, I have a number of printouts if you're interested in our, of our water capital plan. So even though we have retained earnings, it's not that it's not going to be used. Those retained earnings, we do have a plan that actually Par has helped with, helped us with. Which is in draft final form, so, you know, this is a little more aggressive than perhaps what the town's been used to. So there have been plans for the funding of that, that retained earnings.
So I understand what you retained earnings, and I get it, and I appreciate everything you said, have total respect for it. But we're not talking about, um, saying tonight that we're going to fund the, the actual cleanup from the Water Enterprise Fund yet. You would have time to incorporate that next year into your capital plans if we were to go there. So this is just a vote on the hundred K, just to be clear. But again, Andrew, I'm asking you as chair, do you want to talk about this? No, you want to wait?
Well, what, what?
Because I do, there's more to say about how to fund this.
Okay, well, um, you know, it, it may be more efficient now that Bill's here. We would just want to close the loop on this, okay? So how about this, just straw poll, is everyone, everyone's in favor of moving forward with the appropriation? It's just a matter of what's the funding source, right?
Correct.
Okay, and we already had a discussion about this, I don't know, the meeting before, the meeting before that. So I don't want to spend too much time on this, but, um, I move that the board support at town meeting Article One with the, uh, funding source being free cash. I'm sorry, not Article One.
Or?
It's, the numbering might move around, so we'll just say the Atwood Road Restoration Funding.
Second, there's, can we have further discussion?
Sure.
Okay, so at the meeting, we just talked about it. I was on the fence. I heard what Al said, and, um, it's a good argument, but there's more to it. Um, and I would add more to what he said. Yes, we've got a group of, of probably five percent of the households in Southborough that are on, um, wells, including Pine Hill Road, which we both live on. But we also have a, um, group of tax-exempt entities, large schools, that do not pay any real estate taxes, but do pay water bills. So for that reason, I'd like to see this funded through, um, the Water Enterprise Fund, um, because it's a way to also ask the schools to give a little bit more money than they do now to pay for these services that they use. It's not much money, but it, it's a little bit. So I'm, um, in the Mr. Hamilton camp on this one.
I think the water bills are, are going to go up if it's funded that way.
Your tax bill will go up if, uh, if, uh, everybody's tax bill will go up if we fund this the other way. The, the, there's, there's no free lunch here.
But, but that's incorrect, Marguerite. It's going to come out of retained earnings, so the water rates are set for the year. They'll be reset again next February like we always do, so you're not going to see your water bill go up because of this hundred K. It's going to take the retained earnings down, um, for sure, but it's not going to cause the water bill to go up. Now, if we fund the cost of the cleanup, um, that's going to have impact down the road, but we haven't decided that yet where it's going to come out of. This is just the hundred K tonight.
I'm on a well.
Yeah, okay, so, Tim, it seems like you're going to be the deciding vote here.
What's the, um, what's the future use of the potential property and how big of a property is this in acreage?
It's, um, one point eight acres. It is owned by the town, has been owned by the town since the nineteen thirties. Uh, the property has been exclusively used for the water services, even though it was bigger than was absolutely necessary. The Affordable Housing Trust certainly has an interest in putting affordable housing on that. I have to also put my, my fiscal, uh, respons, physically responsible hat on, and if we, if we can't put affordable housing on it, then I, frankly, I think a way to pay for this, uh, upgrade, this repair would be to put the property on the market. It, we, we have no current or expected future use, at least the last time I checked, for the property. And it would certainly generate, uh, a significant sum of money that could be used to offset the cost of cleanup. So those, I think, those are two potential uses of it, you know, as I say. I think we get the better part of the cost of cleanup paid for if we put the property on the market.
Bonnie?
Bonnie Fan of one seventy-nine Middle Road. Uh, Mr. Hamilton, I'd have to say I strongly disagree with you. I am on a well. Eleven of my neighbors are on a private well since nineteen seventy-seven. We all benefit from water someplace in this town. What bothers me is I think you've lost the path that you were on originally. This is a public health issue. It's not, it may be a funding issue and a water department issue, but it's a public health issue. This conversation is going to make it very difficult at town meeting for anything to pass. And right now, what is in front of you is a cleanup, which is public health, not water. There's not enough money in the water reserve fund, the enterprise fund. I was sitting on the board when we set that up. I'm familiar with the tank coming down. The vehicle that you saw in the photo is my husband's vehicle. So I was there that day. There are people that have history. Please consider this a public health issue, not who's paying for it, whether you have water or not. I do not have water. If I lose the power on my street because of a tree, I have to wait for the highway department or somebody to clean it out. I lose domestic water and everything else, just like you, Mr. Hamilton, but I'm willing to pay for a public health issue.
All right, Sarah, and then maybe we'll just take a vote.
Okay.
Unless.
Tim hasn't said what he's doing.
Yeah, if you feel there's some other information you think would be relevant, let us know, but go ahead.
I just, before we start talking about developing the land, selling the land, I'd ask you all to drive Atwood and where it is located. It is a blind curve on both spots. We have talked about two acres being developed and the three acres were also that were next to it, were talked about. That's a five-acre development that has been talked about in the past. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but I'm just asking you to drive the area. You cannot even walk. School buses only go one way. You can't have a school bus and a car going down. This is, I don't want to talk about the development, but because it was brought up, it is very dangerous curve. So I, if you're talking about potential use and how are you going to decide to vote, I just ask that everyone just at one point drive, picture walking Atwood. It's the way to get to the MBTA too, from the neighborhood. That's very dense. I have a picture right here, and I'll just give it to you. This is called, this is the cut, the, the Atwood has been bred and there's all of these acres, and that's the cut. And that's the lot of towers and it's the three acres, but sometimes people.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, you have any comments here? We're just trying to move forward on this.
I, I know where I land now, so I'm, uh.
And just quickly, there is money in the retained earnings to do this, so there is money in the Water Enterprise Fund to do this if we choose to.
Okay, so I made a motion to fund it through free cash. Marguerite seconded, so, uh, okay.
While we're at it, sorry it's taking so long. Um, I think the Water Enterprise Fund is, is part of the DPW's capital plan, and that there are a lot of uses that that can be put to. And I really don't see why things shouldn't get repaired for the water department. Because of a consideration that people who are on wells don't want to pay for this. I'm on a well, I am more than happy to pay for it and move it along as fast as possible. I really think it's too divisive to say some people will pay for it and other people don't need to.
All right, so, nations of the mode, second it, all those in favor to, to fund it from free cash? All those opposed? Okay, all right. So I think there are no longer any items where we need.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask for reconsideration? I would like to, I, I, I intend to vote in favor of this, given that the board has chose to do that.
Right.
Well, I'm not voting against the article, I'm just voting against the, the funding, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, I will now vote to.
All those in favor of funding it through free cash? Okay. All right, thanks. We can let Bill go now, right?
Yes.
You don't need to talk about those other two items.
Yeah, anyone, no one has a question about the?
Not the wall.
The wall, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
What's the other one, Bill?
Uh, the golf course.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda are, um, we have some volunteers for the Cultural Arts Council. And I believe, uh, Mia Bollows, um, is not here, right? Not available?
Yes, that's correct. We did get an email, um, from her, uh, late this afternoon. She apologized, but, um, she was unavailable today. Um, and also her schedule and plans have changed, and her availability now for, um, meetings is not going to be possible. Um, really appreciates the board's consideration, would like to do this at some point in the future. She's just not going to be able to do this right now.
Okay. All right, so then, um, Naya? All right, um, do you want to come forward and just introduce yourself? I know you, you ended up picking a meeting where there's actually a lot of people, but, um, basically, we're just, um, wanted to hear a little bit about your interest in the Cultural Arts Council. You know, we got a, uh, email from Kate, the chair of the committee, saying you'd be a great addition. So I'm certainly, I'm glad you've, uh, stepped forward. Is there anything you want to, you know, explain about what drew you to the Cultural Arts Council and how you can contribute?
Um, actually, I know Kate through other.
Okay.
Areas of our lives, and she had recommended it for me because I've always been an artistic person and very into that side of things. My mom is on multiple boards as well. I have always been in that volunteering and board aspect of things, and I know young people are not always in that sort of area. So it was an opportunity for me to get that side of, like, that view into the council instead of just the not as.
I think that's an outstanding explanation, and I fully support, uh, your appointment. Anyone have any questions or words of encouragement?
Hi, Marguerite.
No, I, no, Naya, and I think you'd be great.
I know Naya too, and her mom, and I know you'll be great. Um, so thank you for coming tonight. Uh, everything's, um, it's great that you're so young and doing this, what a, what a great start, so good for you.
Thanks for stepping forward.
Thank you.
All right, I move that the board appoint Naya Yazdani to the cultural arts council for a term to expire October seventh, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you'll get a appointment letter, and then you actually have to go in your, this morning. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the presentation of the report from the pre-K through eight school building committee. And since Tim, um, Bling is our select board representative on the committee, I wanted to just turn it over to you in terms of how you'd like to. Oh, I don't know if you have a quorum, you need to call the meeting board to order?
We do, we need to call it a order, we have two people online, um, Howard and, uh, Gene should be online.
Okay, so who's going to be making the presentation?
So it'll be a combination of Beth, Kelly, and myself.
Great, all right, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so, um, if we can pull up Vanessa, if we pulled those people over, if we can pull up the, um, the overview document. Okay, so, um, if we can pull up Vanessa, if we pulled those people over, if we can pull up the, um, the overview document.
Well, in the meantime, um, good evening, everyone.
Oh, we need to call it ordered.
Oh, thank you very much. I did put that in the agenda. Can I call the meeting to order? I'd like to call the, um, pre-K to eight building committee, uh, to order this evening.
Uh, it might be on a gene. They, they were together.
And while we're waiting, I, um, just want to thank the committee and particularly thank, uh, Tim and Kelly, who I've worked very closely with. And Superintendent Martino, as well as Assistant Superintendent Reinhorn. And Super, Assistant Superintendent Keith Lavoy, who have made, um, data available to us and have worked diligently with us through the summer. We have gotten some, uh, very complimentary, um, public feedback that, you know, we continued our work through the summer. And we really, as Tim and I discussed at one point, worked diligently to make this an apples to apples comparison. And, you know, we don't bring any numbers forward to you, but we bring the data that we've collected forward to you in as objective a way as we possibly can.
Vanessa, you want me to share? Can you, uh, upgrade?
Tim, at this point, I can't see that.
Yeah.
You want to add anything to this, to?
Sorry, I'm, I'm.
The summary, um, please feel free, but I feel, I, I really wanted to make a point of thanking the, the committee for their work during the summer.
Sorry, I was just trying to move the Zoom stuff around, it's now all over my screen. So, um, the only thing I wanted to add to this is part of the work that we did here, and let me make this larger so people can actually read it.
There we go.
Little bit too far, but there we go. Is that good for about everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so we put together a lot of numbers and our numbers came from the NBC's, um, documents from consultants and, and, uh, the sort. So our numbers are estimates, they're ballpark estimates. Everything's mainly based on a per square foot when necessary number. At that point, we know that numbers are not perfect, but they should be within a proximity of close. That they are representative enough of the scale of these projects to understand what the trade-offs are and how all the. All the options lay out against each other to the best of our ability. But they all will need to have further refinement, um, in the next phase of whatever would move forward. So however, um, whatever options are appealing, they would all need to have further vetting at an appropriate level. So that pretty much covers the important considerations here. I also want to point out feasibility. We did not look at feasibility of all these options. We looked at, you know, would it possibly go there? And if it does, what are the problems that you'd have to look at? So, uh, for Finn, for example, Article ninety-seven could come into play depending on where you would put the structure and the expansion. So we did not look at the feasibility of it, but we did look at what would you have to do to get Article ninety-seven approved at a state level? To be able to take over extra, extra real estate and build on that location. So that being said, um, those were the couple of high level points to start out before we start looking at the data in a deeper area. So I would like to, I'll keep driving here. I'll pull up the. Where did it go? Wasn't expecting to share this part. Do you have?
Hope you to share the.
Yeah, do you have your overview?
Yes. I could take over.
All right, so, um. As they've already explained, we've been working the last couple of months, um, on the configurations of the charge was tasked with researching. A couple of things, um, my name is Kelly Conklin, I have been an educator for over a decade. Myself and Beth Whitkop have been part of the Educational Considerations and Implications Working Group. Along with Laura Kaufman, who is our school committee rep, Greg Martino, our superintendent, and Stephanie Reinhorn, our assistant superintendent. And we approached this as looking as the educational impacts for our students and our staff members. So back in August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, um, the district looked at a variety of. Goals and decided, sorry, let me start over. A little nervous, I'm normally used to talking to twelve-year-olds, so this is very different. So, uh, Central Administration School Committee adopted the assumptions below and presented at the school committee meeting on the thirteenth. This was in an effort to guide the educational recommendations and positions that we had approaching the configuration research, research. The enrollment and class organization, they used the Nezdecs December two thousand twenty-four data, um, with a twenty thirty-four enrollment projection. Uh, the plan was for eight classes per grade level and adherence to the school committee's class size policy. They also considered, um, a scheduling and the instructional model. Grade six to seven had seven periods a day, forty-six minutes per class. The assumption was grade five would be in self-contained classrooms for their core subjects, um, as well as having art and music forty-five minutes per week. PE, library and digital literacy for forty-five minutes, two times per week. As well as meeting the Massachusetts and District Time on Learning Standards for, uh, grades K to five. In terms of programs and placements, um, the Castle Program, the assumption was that it was gonna remain at Trotter, but only for South Borough residents. Um, and for those of you who are not familiar with the Castle Program, that is our program that services, um, those on the spectrum. It also made the assumption that the COM therapeutic program would remain at Trotter. The Assavet Valley Collaborative Reach Program would no longer be located at Trotter, Trotter. SAM would no la- no longer be located at Trotter. And the New England Center for Children would no longer be located at Trotter. In terms of design principles, um, the organizations of the grades levels would be into pods. So that it would reduce the cross-traffic between those grades, meaning, um, it makes it much easier for community building within those grade levels. And for teachers to collaborate on assignments, um, and just larger community building events. In terms of standards and agreements, they also had to make sure that we adhere to any sort of educator contracts. Adhering to individualized education plans or IEPs. These are legally binding documents for those who are not in the education world. Um, and that services a diverse learning student needs, student learning needs, um, and as well as our English language development population. We all, or they also considered the MSBA space guidelines, um, when determining the space needs. They use that as just a general guideline. So from there, um, they talked about the different criteria that we assume should be the expectation, should hopefully be our goals. If we want to continue having such great school systems in South Borough. They broke it into the student experience versus the staff experience, um, you can tell by the colors. They also prioritized it, um, based on what the district felt was the, the largest priority. But I just want to note that the district understands that what may be the priority of the district might not be what the town views as the, the same priority. So that will come into play a little bit later. So for the district, we feel that reducing student transitions between the schools is important. It cannot be. It's hard to create a ballpark number of the cost of efficiency that is lost when you have students transitioning to multiple schools. Because there is a significant amount of time that teachers spend in those grades preparing students for that transition. And that is happening at multiple times. So for the district, that is a priority.
As well as the administrators planning for those transitions.
Dedicated spaces for core academics with facilities that meet the needs of that discipline. That basically means if you have a middle school science lab, it should be a middle school science lab and not just a general ed classroom. Dedicated spaces for English language development programs, intervention services, special education. And that includes occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech and language therapists, adaptive physical education, school psychologists. Board-certified behavior specialists, guidance counselors, behavior specialists and adjustment counselors. So for this one, if you are not familiar with education today, um, it is vastly different from when we were all in school. There are so many different ways that educators use small space and, um, small grouping in order to deliver a number of these services. And they are happening throughout the day consistently. So it's difficult to quantify how many physical spaces you may need. Because number one, it changes year to year and number two, it changes based on the students you have in front of you. So it's a little bit difficult to plan for that. Is there anything else you wanted to add? And Greg, please stop me if I'm, huh, messing anything up. The, a number one dedicated space or expanded space for specialized education. Again, that's our Castle Program and the COM Program. Maintaining specials programming when you see or hear something referred to as specials, we're talking about related arts, like art and music class. So we want to make sure that students maintain access to those programs and we're not, you know, eliminating that for a certain grade. Maintaining band, chorus, orchestra, lessons and workshops. Curriculum expertise and resources are aligned within the building. Meaning obviously our goal is to not have staff members traveling to multiple buildings. That is not as efficient as if someone is located all in one building and they can deliver services throughout the day. You lose that travel time. And the ability to group grades by grade level in a physical space is supported. In terms of staff and experience, maintaining or enhancing our teacher collaboration opportunities. Creating space that they are able to do that in is extremely valuable. Maximizing staff time and efficiency. Providing dedicated space for educator meetings, planning, preparation. When you have meetings like IEP meetings, you need to have conference rooms in order to be able to do so. So making sure that we have enough space for that. And then off-space for administrators and administrator assistance. So, um, if you've been following along, the district and the Educational Considerations and Implications Working Group. Worked together to create a very large heat map. And it's very difficult to read. So what we've done is we've sorted it into each of the different configurations, each one having its own special page, so it's much easier to digest. So this is an overview of our current schools. Finn is pre-K to one, Woodward two to three, Neri is four to five, Trotter your six to eight. And it just goes through and identifies if the current configuration meets those goals that I just discussed. So obviously with Finn and Woodward, um, it does not reduce any of our student transitions. So that's why those are red. When we see something that's yellow, it's meeting the goal, but we do have to make some sort of trade-offs. For example, um, let me see. Time and efficiency, when we have staff or down here, um, you still may have staff traveling between, um, buildings. Based on, you know, whatever they're hired at a full-time status or not. So these are our current schools. This is option A on our matrix. And Tim, I don't know if you want to like pause and go back and forth or if I should just keep going.
I think we should keep going and then we can pick up these options on a different perspective and we'll just keep the, the paths.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so this is option A. This is Finn becomes pre-K to two, Trotter becomes three to six, Woodward becomes seven to eight. So this configuration partially advances our goals and, but leaves substantial program gaps. To reach the full alignment, the targeted investments would be required such as additional service and planning spaces at Trotter. Additional core academic classrooms and collaboration space at Woodward. Purpose-built music and special spaces at both of the sites. Increased capacity for specialized, uh, special education programs at Trotter. Without those mitigations, a configuration would continue to, to rely on workarounds that limit the program quality and the consistency. And just a very simple example of that is Trotter is built as a middle school, it has science labs. Woodward does not have those, so you're basically retrofitting each building to become the other. So as you can see, there is a lot of red, so, um, without going through each and every one.
And I do want to note that the science labs at Trotter are really quite advanced for a nineteen ninety-eight build. And it would be a shame to not utilize those labs.
Right, and I mean, we're talking bathrooms, counter sizes, all, everything that goes into making an elementary school, an elementary school. So overall, this did not meet, um, the criteria that we would define as meeting our goals for continuing to have excellent schools. So the district does not support this one.
And this is as they are today without substantial renovations. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe so. So this is option, I'm gonna zoom out just a little bit. B one. That did not do. So this is Finn pre-K to two, Woodward is three to four, Trotter is five to eight, this is with no additions. So for this one, um, the configuration meets our core classrooms, uh, needs across the three schools. And reduces our student transitions, which is obviously a goal for the district. However, there are student services and staff service support are uneven. Finn and Trotter have notable gaps in special education and adult workspace, the English learning development, um, students and special ed programs. They do not have their services needs met. This option also fails to provide adequate space for specials and music programming. Collaboration and curriculum alignment are constrained by the physical space at Trotter. Focus space investments at Finn and Trotter would be required to meet the district standards. And, um, it was estimated that in order for adding two to Finn and five to Trotter. There would need to be an addition of somewhere between ten thousand to fifteen thousand square feet at each of those two, two schools. Um, and again, that is an estimate. More work was done to break down the detail of these implications, which is referenced, I think, in, um, the information that Tim sent out. But overall, this one does not meet our, the district goals and the district does not support it.
Um, and I'll just add, this is B one, we do have a B two coming up next, so this one is without additions to the current buildings.
Correct. This is option B two. This is that same configuration, two at Finn, five at Trotter, however, with additions to Finn and Trotter. The configuration largely meets the district's objectives by reducing student transitions and provides adequate space with those renovations. For core academic classrooms, the English learning community, special ed services, as well as the planning and administrative space. Band, chorus, orchestra all can remain viable at the upper grade level. Whereas if we look at the documents provided by the district, there was a question of if, um. Students would be able to join band based on the way the band program is set up.
Okay, so Tim, I'm confused. I thought B one said you're gonna add ten thousand to fifteen thousand square feet.
You, you would have to add it.
Yeah.
Change what you see.
This won't work unless we added it.
Yeah.
All right, so the web there. It's not added, now it's added?
So this is without the renovation, this is with the renovation.
Okay.
I think it's Jean on the phone.
Yes, um, in, in looking at B one, the district used a calculation that allocated. Eight classrooms for each grade K one and two. In looking at the statistical information that the, um. District has submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And to the, uh, through the Nezdek data, we have not used twenty-four classrooms for kindergarten one and two. In the past fifteen school years and in the Nezdek report is not projected to, um, include that number of classrooms going forward. So the amount of space that is taken out for classrooms should be reduced. And also that has implications for the other space needs in the, in the Finn school. I just would really like to make sure that the select board is aware of that information. That, um, what we're being presented with here does not, um, correlate with the information that is reported to the Department of Education. Or in the Nezdek report.
And, um, on the V four spreadsheet, um, Jean's points are laid out, so we can see the logic behind the entire approach. Jean's points are laid out, so we can see the logic behind the entire approach.
Greg, I don't know if you'd like to address that. Want to go to the microphone?
So I'll comment generally. So first, NASDAQ is a firm that does our demographic studies. It has done our demographic studies for a number of years. He uses a variety of data. So the report that Jean is referring to is the report we received in December of twenty twenty-four with our enrollment projections. So if you look at that enrollment projection, the birth rate that NASDAQ use is a hundred. We had RLS look at the demographic data and updated the data in May. There was a significant change in birth rate from a hundred in the fall to a hundred and seventeen in the spring. So that accounts for an increase in enrollment in five or six years that we have to plan for. So whatever we're planning for in terms of additions, renovations, there needs to be a contingency plan. It can't be so restrictive that any variation in enrollment is going to cause some of the unintended outcomes of not being able to run programs as we hope to, for example, spaces for music, EL, special education, and so on.
But Mr. Martin, no, that information reflects exactly what I'm stating. If you have a hundred or a hundred and seventeen, you're still utilizing six classrooms for that group. So there's no scenario where eight classrooms would be used. And in, in the scenario that you're proposing in B one indicates that the music space, the art space is taken over by classrooms, which isn't necessary.
If I can just interject here, I think, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, it would be most productive if we just kind of go through, let's go through the options, okay, rather than go off on some of these tangents. And then, then we'll just talk about what we do next, maybe in terms of discussion, because I know there's a lot of people here who are interested in kind of overall more of the big picture.
I think it's important.
Two, are you moving next to C?
Mr. Chairman, I do think it's important that we at least highlight where there are areas of disagreement that clearly need substantial vetting, you know. The classrooms per grade requirement is clearly a major cost driver. And, um, you know, a swing of birth rates, a one-year swing of birth rates is not a trend, and so that, you know, that I think we need to highlight areas where we need additional information and additional analysis so that we're making the right decision, because we're talking about a lot of money, anyway we cut it.
We agree, but let's just go through the presentation, because I'm confused about what the committee thinks and what the school group thinks.
If I may, I think it's really important to understand. And again, we came at this, our subgroup was the educational considerations. So we came at this with the expertise that we all bring to this subcommittee around education. And if you think that you only need six classrooms for six groups of students in those six classrooms, that is a, a fallacy and an inaccurate argument. And we cannot just think of this as, okay, we have a hundred and twenty students, we're gonna have four classrooms, or we're gonna have five classrooms of twenty, so we have more than that. It, it doesn't work that way in education anymore, and I think it's really important to understand that. And this subcommittee has worked really, again, diligently and in good faith to demonstrate that. So you cannot just look at this, that here's this group, they only need six classrooms, and they're not gonna need smaller spaces to support the students who need extra supports. So having that said, this committee was not tasked or charged with giving you our opinion, and we will not tonight. Clearly, there is some divergence. But again, I want to be really clear about the educational considerations that this subgroup has brought to the whole group and is bringing to you tonight.
Okay, so maybe we can just keep going through the.
I think we should just keep going.
Thank you.
So with B two, the district feels that it meets these goals. There are obviously some trade-offs. It's not a perfect option with the renovations. However, the district is willing to support it.
I'm sure you lost your train of thought.
All right, we teach. Yes. Option C one. This is the minimal and immediate deferred maintenance of Neri. This is the roof, the targeted asbestos abatement. This is seen as strictly a short-term solution while the town chooses to the next viable configuration to move forward with this. Obviously, the district knows that there are trade-offs. We support it. Option C two is a full deferred maintenance package with the roof, the windows, ADA compliance, kitchen, and a phased renovations. And this option doesn't necessarily address the educational teaching spaces, therefore, in terms of our criteria, there's no change in the status of meeting these goals. However, that being said, we, we meet the criteria with trade-offs, the district and the committee supports this in terms of our, the educational. Option D, this is Finn is expanded or renovated to serve pre-K to three. Woodward serves four to five, Trotter serves six to eight. And this meets all of the criteria. It's district and working group supported. It reduces the transitions. It allows for appropriate space for core instruction, our English learners, their intervention in special education. This option eliminates the need for an addition and or any sort of renovation of Trotter, so it takes Neri offline completely. The curriculum resources aligned by grade allows for strong learning and collaboration. And there's significant construction scope at Finn that required was obviously more feasibility, because that was not the scope of what we talked about. Option E, this is the full ADA and code compliant renovation of Neri. There is a minor trade-off in maintaining and enhancing the teacher collaboration opportunities, but otherwise, it provides a comprehensive facility with improvements, program capacity while leaving the transition pattern completely unchanged, which based on the information that I think Al and, I can't remember the other gentleman's name, presented to us and from the survey. Again, that doesn't necessarily, Mr. Newt, the transition doesn't necessarily seem to be the top priority for the town. So this one meets with trade-offs, and the district supports it. Option F is a new forward-grade school at any possible location. This one again has one trade-off, but the configuration strengthens instructional coherence, collaborations and service delivery, and simplifies the number of transition students have to make within the, the school district. It eliminates the need for any sort of addition or reno to Trotter, and as well as takes Neri offline as a school. Option G, this is a new pre-K to five school. Obviously, this would be the most significant capital investment. It meets all of the, the criteria. This would be if we could get anything we wanted. A single elementary campus, minimize student transitions, improves continuity, staff efficiency, eliminates the need for any sort of addition or reno at Trotter as well as taking Neri offline. This would obviously be great, but not realistic. And option H, uh, this is the last of the ten options, I promise. This is Finn pre-K to two, Woodward three to five, using modulars. So there would be modulars to accommodate those additional grades at Finn and Woodward. Their modulars made permanent. So this option eliminates the need for additions or renovations at Trotter as well as taking Neri offline. There is clearer grade spans and core classrooms, and that's achieved. However, there is a reliance on permanent modulars, and that creates persistent deficits in terms of student services and staff support. The modulars are a little less flexible in terms of spacing. Permanent modulars limit flexibility, storage, room adjacencies that are required for services, specials and workspace. And again, if we're going to add an entire grade at any of the schools, it's expected there to be ten thousand to fifteen thousand square feet of space added in order to meet our goals without having significant trade-offs in the student experience and learning.
So there, the ten and fifteen is Finn and Woodward?
Yes. Ten and ten to fifteen at Finn, ten to fifteen at Woodward.
And I'll mention that this one has a slight disparity when we go over to the V four matrix, because the understanding of the group earlier was that modulars, the, the new, new Neri plan of modulars at Woodward and modulars at Finn, that was the inspiration. So that was interpreted as turn them permanent. The original request was to have those as permanent additions of the building and not a modular. So when we look at the matrix in a second, the numbers are a little bit different than what this shows. This represents if they would have modulars themselves, temporary structures turned into permanent situations. So a little bit of a nuance, just because we didn't have enough time to get everything fully cleaned up for the committee.
So this is probably the easiest one to digest. So we have ten options that we looked at. Out of those ten options, there are seven that the school and the school district, the school committee, and the educational considerations and implications working group all feel like can be supported, which seven out of ten ain't bad.
So that's the educational side of this. I think we can move right into the other, um, the matrix side, the V four matrix. So this is on purpose, so you can see how dense this is. If anybody wants to read it better, there's a one in the back of the room here. It's also gonna be posted online for the meeting on the pre-K page, so you can really get deeper into this as you see fit. So I'll start by zooming in to option A, and we can talk about the details. This thing would go away. Anybody see that in the back? No, okay, I will go larger. There we go. Somewhat better. Sorry, guys, this is a lot of information, so I'll do my best here. So option A, we already talked about what this one was. Pre-K to two at Finn, grades three through six at Trotter, grade seven and eight at Woodward. So we're swapping Trotter and Woodward. We assume that this would be a seventy-five percent renovation to each structure, so it was a per square foot, and we assume seventy-five percent of it would have to be touched. It was calculated at a price of six hundred and thirty-five seventy-eight a square foot.
How much?
Six hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-eight a square foot. That is a twenty twenty-four number with twenty-one point one percent soft costs included in construction costs off of the MSBA, uh, finished projects timeline. Andrew Pfaff helped us pull these numbers together. So you can see here, twenty twenty-four baseline, including soft costs. So this project as a whole would be around ninety-three million dollars in twenty twenty-four numbers. So as you escalate four percent per year, you can start to see the, um, how much more expensive this project could be to swap the buildings.
Let's see, now go slow. Okay, so that's swapping Trotter and Woodward.
Swapping Trotter and Woodward, correct.
In closing, Neri.
Closing Neri. This does not include the cost to close Neri. This just is simply, these numbers here are just what the cost of renovating seventy-five percent of two buildings would be. One of them sixty-eight thousand square feet, one of them's a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. So if you go further over, we can start to see maybe these could be in MSBA reimbursement, we could apply for certain grants. We could, the site demolition is estimated around two point six to three million dollars total with remediation for Neri. So if we decided to knock the building down, we're sitting at around a two and a half to three million dollar cost. If the building would be used for something else, that could be a different number. Uh, we know a roof could be more expensive than that potentially. So all of this would come into play for what future needs might be. And then the life expectancy of this option would be somewhere between thirty to forty years, considering that you would have largely new renovated structures. We already talked about the implications for the matrix. Uh, that's everything Kelly just walked through.
Okay, does not meet, right?
This one does not meet. And actually, this, I should preface this, this does not meet, is not representative of the number that I'm showing. It's of the buildings as they are swapped. So this column here is on the, as the buildings currently stand today, assumption. So this was where we started having some deviations of looking at, well, what if we wanted to renovate it? So we could meet it, and then they combined. So it really could become an A one and A two, but we didn't really break everything out. So it's a little bit confusing from that.
It's confusing. So maybe I wouldn't go all the way across. I'd just stick on that vertical column, so we can get the big picture of the cost.
Let me, let me finish this one, just so people know what's here, because I think staying in the executive summary is best for time tonight. So domino effects, we did look at what would happen about Mooney Field over at Finn. We had a town council opinion on what the process would be to use summer part of that field if we would need it for a school expansion. We would have to, we, we would more than likely have to find suitable replacement land within town and then get state approval to be able to swap the land there. So if we would want to use those fields, because they are used for recreation today, they do have Article ninety-seven designation that we would have to be aware of. So that being said, that column is pretty well laid out of what is there. So now I'll just move through the columns and say in the executive summary and the cost. B one, so this is what Jean was just talking about, um, on the phone a couple minutes ago. This is the layout of using the existing space with how many classrooms it has, how many students per grade, what the density of the student population would be for each classroom, and trying to lay it out within the buildings as they see today. You can see down here at the bottom, this, this section here that talks about the reality of it. At the end of the day, this seems like it could possibly work today, but there's no opportunity for future expansion. So it might prevent a premature expansion, but it's not gonna necessarily prevent, uh, one in the future. So if you look through this whole thing, we would think that option B with pre-K to two at Finn and Trotter getting grade five would be somewhere between one to three million dollars on just signage, uh, whatever building needs in this particular option. Option B two would be the additions to Finn and the addition to Trotter. So Finn would need about a nine thousand net addition to be able to fit all the programmatic spaces into that building. Using a gross factor of one point five to get hallways and bathrooms, you land at thirteen thousand five hundred square foot addition. Trotter would need about a seventy-two hundred net square foot renovation or addition at a ten thousand eight hundred gross square foot number. So adjusting at a one thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollar and twelve cents square foot addition cost, we're looking at about a twenty-eight million dollar addition or in twenty twenty-four dollars before escalation for those two buildings. And then we would assume that the rest of the building may not be able to be used as it stands. So we would need to do a light renovation of the existing structure around fifteen to twenty-five percent of that structure for each school.
Okay, I'm not trying to be dense. Between this one and the previous one that was one to three million dollars, right? Jean supports. Here, okay, you said it could work on that one, right? You could fit it in if you had to. But this one, you're saying we don't think we can fit it in. We need more room.
We're saying that if you would do B one, you don't have any flexibility of space, and you're putting students at twenty students per classroom. You might be adjusting a lunch schedule. Pre-K would come out of that building, and the North Borough pre-K would come out of that building, so you'd use that space as well. And you would have, uh, possible impacts or creative solutions to program spaces. So you might have to share program spaces to be able to meet the educational, um, impact today. I think I got that accurate.
Yeah, based on what was presented at the school committee meeting, there was significant impacts on the student experience in terms of their access to specials, related arts. You have teachers moving between classrooms on their carts. And I don't know.
We can't hear you.
So I think, um, as there were, there are disagreements around enrollment, there's also disagreements around the option of fitting in to Finn and Trotter. That was the work of. That was the work of the working group to see if that was feasible. So I would encourage people to look more closely at the educational considerations analysis and the programmatic implications and the detailed space usage to really take a deeper dive into this.
And I also would caution us to be careful about calling a renovation a light renovation, because we don't have those figures or those numbers, so we don't know what it would be. So that would just be my input.
So you're referring to B2?
Yeah, our best guess was assuming the building is already being used for a purpose today that is similar to what the future purpose would be. We assume that most of the building would be able to be used as is, and maybe some doors, classroom, some, maybe Sam comes down of Trotter Year, for example. And then you would have that space get repurposed as a classroom. So you might need to do some level of renovation to just make it a more usable classroom and maybe some level of a build-out of a wall or something. So we just loosely grouped it in as a 15 to 25% of the square footage of the existing building, needing some level of investment at around that $600 per square foot number.
And then if Sam moving out, where does it go in the town of South?
Sam's got a lease with Trotter Year, but we can deal with it later. So you're gonna, so Sam, Neck, and Asabet would all go someplace else?
Yes, and those were the assumptions that when we went through the educational implications, were assumed to matter what. And I believe North Borough pre-K is coming out no matter what in the 2026 to 2027 school year. So they're, they're out of the equation no matter what we do.
And the impact of losing Neck could potentially cost the district more.
Well, using Asabet, they pay rent too. Sam did pay rent upfront. It's done now, but they paid rent too, so.
I also just want to point out and remind people that we need to think of our district and our education as a business, and that if you don't have all of the playing cards, it's hard to solve the full equation. And there are external facing documents and internal documents, things that cannot be shared because they're, you know, specific to student individualized education plans. And those needs, again, change. So it would be difficult to make an assessment on space needs when you don't have that specific data on the students that are coming up.
So back to what we have in front of us, B2 is the best attempt to incorporate the additions that the school committee and the school working group brought, the educational working group brought forward for what they would need to maintain excellence in the school system. So the best up, or the best look here is in a $20, $25, somewhere between a $50 to $63 million project to add the, the renovations, the additions to this building and renovate part of the building as we see the project today. C1, again, is the, just the immediate things we needed to do to Neri to keep it online as a school, what would potentially fall in the Springtown meeting for funding. So somewhere between this, and the numbers are getting refined, there is notes here for that. Somewhere between three to four and a half million was kind of a guesstimate for the roof and the asbestos abatement. C2 is the minimum renovation of Neri.
Keep going.
Is the minimum renovation of Neri, the assumed deferred maintenance. The, the option that was kind of presented with the no vote when this was put out for the, the yes and no vote for the Neri project. So all the items that were sort of put into there landed around 6.75 million. This, as we looked into it more, this is the one that really needs the feasibility study if this option would be pursued, because 6.75 doesn't necessarily seem adequate with a new roof coming in higher than what the estimate was in this year. And it was really a difference of a single-layer roof to a double-layer roof in longevity. So there's a couple of things within this that would need to be looked at, but this all comes from the VERTEX report that was done a number of years ago, which is also getting older at this point. So Finn expanded to serve pre-K to three. So this one, we took a certain level of assumption. So we had a number that the school committee was able to give us, or the school was able to give us for how much space would be needed at Finn. That space was doubled to put one more grade in here. So that gave all of these arts, speech, psych, everything got a double capacity need for this, so we could get to an assumed amount of cost. And this one lands somewhere around $53 to $57 or $58 million in $2025 to be able to put the third grade or second and third grade into Finn. Again, feasibility would need to come in. You would have to take up more space going into the fields that are protected. So there would be a huge effort just to make sure that this was even viable, if this would be, want to be pursued. So the full code compliant of Neri, this comes right from the packets of information that were studied before. This project was quoted between $43 to $46 million. The numbers escalated up, because it probably would be from when they were done, would be closer to 45, 48. I mean, I think we're really looking into the 50s for doing this project when, if we would go into a full feasibility study and do schematic drawings. The new four grade was the only thing that we had with really firm numbers. This was the new Neri project. So we could look at this one for what a full project would look like with MSBA reimbursement, but everybody's fairly familiar with this project at this point. So a pre-K to five at a suitable site. So assuming we have a piece of property for free, this project on a new Neri cost, taking how many classrooms or how many grades were there, and then multiplying that with two more grades, you landed a $155, $160 million project in $2025. So assuming, again, the property is free, and you could take the new pre-K, or the new Neri project, and then just move it over and apply it to extra two more grades, you land at this, these kind of figures. So again, this is all taking everything with a grain of salt, but you would assume you might need more gym space, you might need more cafeteria space. There's numbers within the other project that would have to be looked at.
So if this one were to be the one pick, you would close Finn and Woodward as schools?
And, and Neri. You would close three schools and you'd open one new school. So if we would have a major cost as a town on doing any renovations of the other buildings, then this one you'd want to maybe look at further from a efficiency standpoint. So that would be kind of why we included this one here. That's why we kept it from the beginning to consider what that option might look like. And then the last one is H, and this is the one that we have a deviation between the educational matrix and then this one. So this one is the, it's inspired by the temporary move, and it's essentially B2, but instead of using Trotter Year for five through eight, you move fifth grade into Woodward. So a lot of this math here mirrors everything in B2, where you would assume that you would need an addition of 9,000 square feet at Finn, 7,200, which would have been at Trotter Year, now here at Woodward. And then multiplying that by the amount of the rest of the building you would still need to touch. So this project would be somewhere potentially in the scope of $36 to $44 million on $2025. So again, this one, Woodward is constrained by the site. It is against a bunch of other property, Article 97 would come back into play here with the field there. And then you have the public safety building, the golf course, set the capacity, other things to consider if this would be pursued or wanted to be looked at further. So that's the high-level overview of the breadth of information that we have for you.
Can you just flip back to renovating Neri completely?
So that would be right here, option here, option E.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. All right, I'm just trying to, what I can do to kind of put this in context. I think everyone on the committee deserved, deserves our thanks for volunteering for, you know, a difficult committee. They obviously, a lot of work was put into this. And I think it was a productive exercise. No, remember that a lot changed between the time that we formed this committee and the, tonight. Because when we originally created the charge for this committee, we were still considering requesting an extension of the MSBA and maybe working up another alternative proposal to have for an annual of, of Ball Town meeting or an annual town meeting. So this information isn't as immediately actionable as I think we had originally thought of when we put together this charge. But hopefully, this can be of some value in terms of at least narrowing, you know, some of the options to consider. And anyone else have anything to say? Or would you like to have it so that we ask further questions from the, of the committee before we open up to public comment?
Given we've still got a lot to do tonight, and this is a lot to digest, I wouldn't, I hope we're not going to get in the weeds. I've got a couple of bigger questions.
And just to be clear, we're not voting on anything tonight. This was a kind of a, I think you, the committee did a good job with a strange charge, which was to perform all this research, but not really to make an opinion or express a recommendation, right? So again, thanks to everyone on the committee. We're not debating anything tonight or voting in on anything tonight, just hearing the proposal, I'm hearing the report. So.
If I may, Andrew?
Yes.
I do think that we fully vetted, particularly from the educational subcommittee, we fully vetted the educational considerations in, in the 10 options that Kelly presented. And so I think, from my perspective, not being very, and not particularly well-informed on the Neri building project, hoping to go to town meeting and become informed and persuaded to vote, I do think that this gives future committees, school committee and the select board, some real serious options to consider and serious directions to consider. And it's my understanding that the school committee has, you know, determined which option that they would like to pursue. So I, I hope that our work, I don't think our work was in vain. I mean, there were many, many meetings from the educational subgroup and many, many conversations with Tim and Eric and like, that you will be able to use this information, it will help inform your decisions and then really inform the voters of what was fully looked at and vetted by our work.
All right, thank you. So Kathy, do you want to?
So I just want to reiterate, this was a tremendous amount of work, and we are truly appreciative, especially being able tonight to talk about the educational plan and understanding that piece, because, and I'm going to look at you, so I understand how in-depth you two are as far as education, you know it. So my first question is, was your subcommittee in unanimous agreement with the ones that said that they were acceptable by, so, so school group and you all agreed with those as far as meeting the educational goals, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
All right, second, and Beth, I'm putting you on the spot here too.
You always do.
No, I don't, no, I don't. But me, this is a good, good spot to be on, and I will get in a lot of trouble for my question, I will, you won't. So knowing what you know about the cost, and you, can, everybody can see with those 10 options, almost every one of them were very expensive, except for the one where you do nothing and move one grade to Trotter Year, one grade to Finn, right? And I'm not talking about just doing the quick fix on Neri that would, you still got to do a whole lot, right? So every one that is a realistic project that would have to be done was pretty expensive. I think the least one was in the high 40s, Tim, something like that?
50.
Around, yeah, 32 for
130.
Right, and these would be totally out of pocket for the town unless we did an MSBA, then you'd add another two years on if you're going to do that, so you'd have to roll the cost up.
30, 36-ish was about the cheapest one that really considered.
Okay, so here's my question to you, Beth, and don't yell at me. Knowing now what you've seen put together as far as the costs go, do you still agree that we should have voted to cut off any consideration of MSBA with the new four-grade school? That was still the right decision?
Yes, I believe it was.
Okay, so that's all I've got.
First, thank you very much, you know.
Thank you, Al.
It was a Herculean task, and I feel like I've been drinking through a fire hose. And so you guys deserve a lot of credit. I think the challenge now is, you know, we've, you've taken a first pass at what is possible and what you think it might cost. This is an iterative process. Now we have to, and this falls more on our shoulders than yours, to figure out what the town can actually afford. I've been critical in the past that we have engaged in building processes and never asked, what can we actually afford? And so I think we need to take a hard look at what, what the tax, what tax burden can the, can the taxpayers actually support? It's very clear that, you know.
And I, if I may, I can't agree with you more, you know, having built a principal in two different districts, you deal with what you have. And, you know, Franklin, my former district, has undergone significant changes because of a failed override. So we do need to, to make do with what we have and what people can afford. So I can't agree with you more. And, you know, I'll speak to it later at a town meeting in, in the spring of what, you know, my professional and personal opinion would be, but I cannot agree with you more. We need to look at the options, we need to look at what is doable, and we need to look at the buildings that we own and have and we've invested in.
This goes, you know, beyond, you know, other capital requirements that the town has. So I think, you know, there's a lot of work now that needs to happen on, on this side of the ledger to really say, you know, what can we reasonably afford?
So then before we open it up to public comment, Superintendent Marner, is there anything you want to add to the? You need to, microphone, sorry. Because you're usually up front when you're
I should have a built-in mic. So I just want to reiterate what Beth shared, and that is, there are many options the school committee voted to support that were presented by Kelly this evening. Well done. And it also did vote a preferred option, and that was a renovation of Neri. And that was primarily due to the cost, the feedback from the town in terms of, you know, the survey data, and also rethinking about the priorities. So one major priority was reducing transitions. That, that was not priority of the town. So we, we have gone back and reflected and, and spent more time thinking about, you know, what we could support, but there are many options we could support. I agree, the next step is for the school committee and the select board convene and talk about what's the next iteration of the work that needs to be done.
Yeah, and if I may dovetail on that, Greg, I do think it speaks very highly of our school district, that transitions were not a number-one priority for our parents with school-aged children. It speaks very highly of what the administrators and teachers and central office does to make transitions smooth, meaningful, and it's, it's, I can speak from experience. It's a lot of work. Me transitioning fifth graders to the middle school and transitioning eighth graders to the high school is an enormous amount of work, teachers, administrators, counselors, the entire district. So I, I do think that, that the fact, Greg, that transitions were not a number-one priority with the survey data results speaks very highly of how you handle transitions.
Okay, Beth?
Good evening, Betsy Rosebaum, 5 Strawberry Hill Road. Oh, Beth is my legal name, that's fine. That's how I'm registered, no problem. I have a quick question about the handout, but I do want to thank and acknowledge the Board of Selectmen for choosing this, oh, sorry, Select Board, for choosing this path, appointing this committee. And thank you to the committee. I followed your work, and I really appreciate all the time you've given to this. On page 12 of the handout, option F, which is a new four-grade school, which I believe is the proposal that didn't get approved, why would that not meet all the educational criteria? One of them, it says it meets with trade-offs.
Yes, and I believe that had something to do with the F, option F.
Option F.
Four columns down, Greg.
So the trade-off is that there's an age continuum for specialized programming. So we would have, would be on the cutoff of the age continuum requirement. So it's 48 months, so it would require waivers for some of our students to attend the specialized programming at that four-grade school. So that is the trade-off.
Thank you. So that was inherent in the previous plan as well. Thank you very much.
Hey, is there any other comment?
We have one committee that moved to stand up on my.
Okay.
Hello, this is Howard Anderson. I, I want to comment on option H. Specifically, Tim mentioned that there was a little miscommunication between the school department and our committee in reference to why H was proposed. I proposed it, H was proposed simply because I realized there was some disagreement on fifth grade going to Trotty. But I also felt strongly that we should try to work towards a three-school system. And so I proposed that, and I proposed it, and it got misunderstood that it was just portables. It was never my intent to have portables in option H. My intent is to have full-blown additions similar to B2, as Tim pointed out. But I just want to make it clear that even though the school department's option H criteria has a lot of, does not meet, I believe that if it was better understood by the school department, option H would be similar to B2, where it would be with reservations, but not, does not meet expectations.
So Howard, I spoke with, we met as a committee last eve, last night, and we talked about this. And even with that clarification, it does not change.
Okay.
From our, from our subgrouping, subgroup work.
Okay.
Mary?
Hi, Mary Tinty, 2 General Henry Knox Road. I just, I attended a lot of these committee meetings, both, most of them in person, a couple that I couldn't attend in person, I either did online or listened to afterwards. So I've got a pretty high-level knowledge of the workings of this group. And I want to thank them, and I also want to say that from the jump, I've been exceedingly impressed by the educational information that has come forward. And I would really encourage everyone to drill down into what that subcommittee learned and presented. And if anybody could go back and watch the meetings where the district was relaying information to them, it would be extremely helpful as you're trying to parse all of this. Because I think as everyone takes a big breath here with all this information, there are a lot of different ways we could get lost and trapped spinning our wheels here. And I don't think there's a need to do that. I think the education recommendations are clear. And if we can lead with those and right off the bat eliminate some of the, the more complicated scenarios here, there's no need to jump through these hoops to try and make these things work. There are some really viable options that came through this committee that meet all of our education standards. And I would just encourage everyone to really lead with those. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So if we reach kind of an end point of the discussion, do you want to have a, your, your committee would need to take a motion, vote to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second. So moved, roll call?
Yep.
Roll call, Kelly? Here?
Yes, sorry. I know you're here.
It's late, you've been up early. Tim?
Aye.
And is Eric still here?
No, he left.
He voted with his feet.
Uh, Mark? Jean?
Aye.
And Howard?
Aye.
And is that it? Okay. So adjourned.
Wait, let me.
A recess?
Agree.
Ten minutes?
The recess.
Actually has a relatively new executive director who is very energetic guy, pre-visionary, and is trying to do some exciting new things there. And so I think we're benefiting from some of that. Also, one of the things that the new executive, the administrator has done is Southborough had been short-changed historically with the state allocation through some political maneuvering long ago. We didn't get nearly what our representative shared the money from the state was. And that just changed a couple of years ago. So the MWRIT now has more money to do things. And part of this route change is, is a, is a function of that as well. So all of that's good news. Next slide, please. This one shows where we are in terms of the MWRIT. We don't have nearly as much transit linkage as other towns in this system do. And this, to me, demonstrates that we're sort of short-changed here. And so the, the good news is we're, this new route restructuring is going to help us with that. Next, Vanessa, please. This, again, this is a picture of all of the new routes that are being proposed. The oval there is where Southborough is. And we have a new route in the dark green that actually goes from the MBTA station down there at the bottom now, which we don't have, up to Main Street and then northwest over, off of Main Street into North or Westborough, where it winds up at Apex over there, which is an interesting route. And then from MBTA up to the northeast there, along Woodland Road to Route 9 into Framingham. And then we get a restructured, slightly restructured Route 7, which becomes Route 17, is the light green when it's covered over. You can't see it very easily. And then finally, in the eastern part of town, the little purple squiggle over there is a new route that actually goes by Southborough Meadows, the over 55 group, and gets into Framingham there. So we've got several, I think, very useful pieces of new service. And on this one, you see the 495 connector, it's the orange line that goes from down south all the way up there. So, so again, some exciting things going on there. And this actually will happen in about a year from now, by the time they go through all the public hearing process and planning and buy some new equipment and so forth. The implementation is mid to late 2026, so we won't see the service until then.
So we would have a chance to comment?
That's next, next slide.
Sorry.
Good, yes. Okay, next slide, Vanessa. Thanks. And so what next? We're in the comment period, November 30th is the end of the comment period. And so my ask here is that anybody who's watching this, go to the MWRIT's website, look at the network redesign project, there are detailed maps there and a lot of information about it. So take a look at that. If you have questions, there's information about how to contact MWRIT with questions. And if you want to provide comments, and my real ask is for anybody who's watching this who is interested in using this system, please follow up with the MWRIT and say, I want this and we want to have this. I think we're in good shape now, this is on the drawing board, it's going to happen. But there are always fights for resources and it's not out of the question that somebody else comes along and says, I want to use that money for that Southborough route for this other route over here. So I think it's very helpful for us to act like we really want this to happen, which I think we do. For me, one of the big ones, and Ms. Cook is a proponent of this, having a way for commuters to get from the MBTA up to Route 9 to the office park there.
But this sounds like it cuts it off. It sounds like it takes the hot pot news up to, on Woodland and cuts.
No, one goes straight up from, up Corteville Road, from the T station up to Route 9.
It turns right on right now?
Not currently, but it gets to Route 9, and you can get to either end of Route 9 there with that. So again, we can work on some of that as we go forward here, but at least we now have the connection, I think, to be able to.
But if that wooden one wasn't, instead it went straight up and then took the right, so didn't take the hot pot news, you'd hit all those buildings right there. There's two people in my building that literally ride a bicycle, run like Melrose or something, to the T station, put their bike on the T, get off, and then ride the bike to my building because they don't have a car.
Yep, yep. Well, this gets us closer to that, and again, that's part of the comment period, so I think we get that. And so the final ask is, it would be great if the select board wrote a letter, which I would be happy to help with, to the MWRIT, saying this is important for Southborough, and please be sure that this happens. So that's the pitch.
All right. Well, I, I'd be happy for Southborough Board for this.
And Sam write the letter?
I think that's what he suggested.
Yes, yeah.
Happy to do the draft, other people are better letter writers than I am, but.
No, they're not, you're.
I'd be happy to do the draft, so. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Radio topic number two. Topic number two, I don't know where that is Vanessa, maybe before this, I think. I'm also the designee for the Metro West Regional Collaborative, which is part of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Mimi Lutrell and I are the town's two designees for this. MWR C is actually sponsoring a research project on communication and engagement for towns. And the planning board has, they're looking for volunteers for this to participate. And the planning board has voted to volunteer to participate. I think it's likely that we would be selected, but it's not a guaranteed thing. We pay annual dues to join MWR C, we get access to their research projects. And we also get a lot of community sharing at the meetings, which I find pretty helpful. So for this project, there's no incremental out-of-pocket cost for us because we pay the dues. But it would take two or three hours a month for a staff member to participate. And somebody who's involved with our current outreach efforts, my guess is that would involve Miss Hale in this process, is a key target for this. And and I think the value in our participating is rather than just looking at the outcome at the end, I think participating allows us to frame the questions and ask questions that we're most interested in, to be able to shape the direction of the project. So I think it's worth doing. And I would ask that the Select Board endorse participating. I don't think you need to vote necessarily unless you want to, but I will, if you vote, if you say you want to do it, I'll pass that along and we'll try to get involved in this. The project has a fair amount of details that's in the handout in the packet, so anybody who's interested in looking at the details there, it's there. But I think it's a useful thing and we might get something out of it. Sadly, our level of engagement at places like town meeting and so forth is pretty low in terms of public involvement in government. So I think this could help and it's worth a chance, so I would ask for your support.
All right.
Who's our DEI Director?
It says, as available.
As available. So that's the question, and will you support it?
I I'm happy to offer our support. Now, when you say two to three hours per month, this is like.
They'll come in and interview, I think, of what we're doing. And then use us as a bit of a sounding board as they develop the insights out of what they're hearing from people. And questions, do you think this will help? What's your experience with this kind of stuff? So again, I think we could.
She's nodding, yes, she will do it.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, now, while I have you, one one question that sometimes come up is, are we in the correct planning council?
Or MWR C?
Yeah, or should we be in the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, or should we be affiliate instead of a member of this? I believe there's a central map.
I think we should be in central, frankly.
Okay, because that's what I've heard.
But nobody has asked me. I'm not viewed as a policy maker.
How do we do that?
I think we go to MAPC. Now, I'm not the representative for MAPC, who is, somebody, one of you folks is actually.
The idea is that we're just, we would be, we're a smaller community within the Metropolitan Area Planning Council is greater.
Small fish in the big pond.
Yeah.
There.
All right.
And we are still a small fish, but relatively we're bigger in the central mass, so we could make that request, I guess.
Okay.
Who knows? Okay?
All right.
Okay.
Thanks very much, good to see you folks.
Good to see you too.
Very intimidating saying that. Very, very stern looking.
Okay. So a couple items under Chair's report, these are all more kind of social things to remind people of. People might remember, I'm the Select Board Representative on the Tricentennial Committee. And we had our ice cream social event in Heritage Park. Not last weekend, I think the weekend before that, it was a very successful event. The goal was to just generate, you know, generate continued public awareness of the tricentennial celebration coming up in two thousand twenty-seven. So I'd encourage people to follow the Tricentennial Committee's newsletter and get involved. And will the Tricentennial Committee, as well as the fundraising arm that Kathy is involved with, will have a presence in Heritage Day, which is coming up on Monday, right? So and we are scheduling our annual volunteer recognition breakfast, which is a highlight of the year. I think it's something we should keep doing. Have we said on November third or November seventeenth? The third, okay. And I think we should probably, since it's coming soon after fall town meeting, should maybe make an effort to advertise this maybe with some flyers or whatnot at the at the town meeting. So put it on your calendars, November third. And so I think that covers it, but I also wanted to remind people of, we have a third grade class visiting next week. And I think, as everyone replied with what their availability is, I one time.
It's a whole third grade, eight classes.
Yes, so they come and you just have a little talk with them, they see the townhouse. I had a lot of fun with the time that I did it with Al a couple of years ago. So are we all set on that? Okay, so we're just wait, wait to hear back on the exact times of who's doing what? Excellent, okay, that's all I got under Chair's report. And then Kathy, turn it over to the members report for this, the public forum.
Okay, but can I add on to your Heritage Day? And so the five oh one C three that's supporting the committee is trying to raise four hundred fifty thousand dollars to fund all the things that are planned for two thousand twenty-seven. So it's a big, big number for us. So anything anybody can do to encourage people to buy bricks on Heritage Day, that's one of the things we're doing, or any other thing would be appreciated. Okay, so.
Well, are people familiar with the bricks that we're talking about? You are, okay, good.
Bricks for the park that you can have named after anybody, your doggies, which is what I've done, whatever. Okay, so this Thursday, we are sponsoring a forum at seven o'clock at the townhouse. It's gonna be hybrid, so if you want to zoom it instead of coming here, that's fine. To allow Atlantic management to basically answer any questions on their proposed project itself. If somebody wants to ask a question about the article, they can. We certainly will reiterate that the article is the critical path to getting to the project, it's got to come first. But the real purpose of this is substantive to talk about what they've got planned so that people have questions about traffic, et cetera. They can ask the developer directly and get a answer from them and not have it filtered through Select Board where we may not have the exact answer. So at seven o'clock Thursday, we'll turn it over to Atlantic almost immediately after we introduce them. And hopefully we get a lot of good questions from people. Why are you looking so, why Will? Does that make sense? Okay, sorry, you look like you didn't understand what I said, okay, that's it Andrew.
All right, and then Mark, you have a quick update.
Sure, the the item listed on the agenda is for the Fire Department FEMA Grant Award. I do also have two other grant awards to make you aware of tonight, but first FEMA awarded the Fire Department a FY twenty-four assistance to firefighters grant, grant in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seventy-six dollars nineteen cents. With a little bit of other funds available, a total of twenty-nine four eighty. Fire Department's gonna use this to buy brush equipment to support their efforts when they need to be dealing with fires off-road and out in fields. Police Department also received notification of two grants. The first one was twenty-four thousand seven ninety-six from the Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. That is a competitive grant. The department is going to be using this to purchase seven new Toughbooks, which are the computers to replace the cruiser laptops, which is, which is great news for us. And the second one was an award of twenty thousand two four seven national, from National Highway Traffic Safety Administration funds. It's gonna be used to help fund traffic enforcement overtime shifts, as well as purchasing a handheld LiDAR device. So it's the radar device, it just uses lasers instead, much quicker, much more effective. And so we're very appreciative. Jeff Norton, one of the sergeants, new sergeant, applied for the grant. And very happy that we were able to get that, so kudos to the department and to Jeff for his help with that.
All right, thanks. Okay, so moving to the consent agenda. And do we have any holds on the consent agenda?
I'd like to hold B.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
B is in boy. No, B is in boy.
The Rotary Club Oktoberfest event.
Yes.
We have a couple of Scrivener's changes.
So you want to hold A?
Yes.
Okay, so we're holding, any others?
Okay, are we holding both? So I'm five and sixteen, the nineteenth, I've got one thing.
Six, uh, nineteen.
No, let me back on, it is sixteen, so.
You're gonna, you're gonna hold F too? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay, so.
So do we want to table that until the next meeting to?
Yes.
Okay.
Or maybe if you have minutes, you can just get them directly to Mark or Vanessa and then we'll take another stab and see if we can vote it on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Okay, for the corrections, yes.
All right, so I move that the board approved consent agenda items C, D, and E.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so first corrections to the minutes, open session minutes? I thought you had.
Oh, yeah, I do, okay, this is September sixteen. Line eighty-one, Carl Alviti, not Elvi.
That's right.
A L V I T I, and it shows up again in line eighty-three. A L V I T I, and then on line one twenty-eight, Francis Lundblad is F R A N C E S, I think.
E S, not I S.
Correct.
And then also, while you're making changes to the September sixteen minutes, on line twenty-eight, where it said the board had no question for Ms. Oldershaw, should be no questions.
Oral.
That's right.
Okay, line one sixty-four, at the end of it, meeting is M E E T, not M E T. That's it.
I moved that the board approved the open session meeting minutes for September sixteen as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? And I moved that the board approved the opens, no one had any edits to the nineteenth, right?
Correct.
So I moved that the board approved the open session meeting minutes for September nineteenth.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so that takes care of A. And then for B.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself on B, I'm the president of a not-for-profit that had received a very generous donation from the Rotary Club. And so I don't believe it's appropriate to me to.
Recuse yourself, okay, well, you want to, here's your opportunity to publicize your event a little bit. I mean, I'm all in favor of this, and it was just before the meeting, as we were making some chit-chat, I thought, wow, this sounds like a great party. Is this a new thing?
Yes, it is, yes.
All right.
So Andrew, with your permission, can I kind of tee this up for them?
Absolutely.
I actually went to their meeting last week, so, and my husband's been involved in Rotary for thirty-five years, so I love this club, right?
Yep.
I love these guys, it is a scrappy club.
He was the past president.
Of course, everybody has to be, right? You have no choice. But anyway, this is such, is a well-meaning, productive club. They get so much done, everything they do is for the good of people. They just don't, they're underappreciated as far as what they do, so they do the food trucks, they do pumpkin stroll. This is new that they're gonna tell us about, that they're doing, but they get so much done with so few people that I want to encourage people to tune in and support this club.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Introduce ourselves, right, first?
Yeah, of course. I'm Will Warren, I'm the current co-president, along with Joyce Foucambe. I live at Six Sunrise Drive. Joyce also lives in town, though I don't have her address memorized, she couldn't be here tonight. And of course, this is Carl Guyer.
I can do that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Carl Guyer, I'm treasurer of the Rotary Club.
Past president.
Oh, yeah, yeah, everybody is, yeah. If you, if you want, if you, if you join our Rotary Club, you probably get to be president very quickly and it looks great on your resume.
Right.
All right, so.
You'll definitely be president if you miss a meeting.
Yeah.
So you're, you're sending the good news about the Oktoberfest event on October nineteenth, right?
Yes.
Yes, and we have a guest with us, Michael O'Brien.
Michael O'Brien of the Gem of Owen O'Leary's in Southburn.
Okay.
He's working with us, yeah.
So we are here tonight to ask you for a one-day liquor license for October nineteenth. This is gonna be an event that will be held from one to six P M on the Sunday, where the gazebo is, right down the street. We're working closely with Saint Marks, obviously, to bring this off. And the beer and wine will be served, but strictly between one fifteen and five fifteen, so that we only need one four-hour police detail. And Sergeant DeLuco was very nice to call me twice on this, we discussed it, we discussed our needs. And he agreed that we would only need one officer for this event. This is going to be a new event, you know, we're trying something new, we don't yet know how successful this will be, we hope it will be successful. So we haven't gone out for any sponsors for this event, since we're not exactly sure how it'll go. But we will have four food trucks there, and we, and also Owen O'Leary's will be serving the beer and wine. And there will be a, you know, a profit sharing or revenue sharing agreement. Probably not going to cover all of our costs, but nonetheless, we are hoping that this is gonna become an annual event. And, you know, I think, you know, I look back with pride, I wasn't in the Rotary Club at the time that this was started. But the food truck event was an idea that came forward. And Carl and Dave Rackris from, from Saint Marks were really the progenitors of it. And I think that's become a very successful event. And mostly, not only for the money that we sometimes can donate to different causes, like Al Hamilton's garden, but also Southborough Youth and Family Services, veterans, and then we also raise funds occasionally for our scholarship fund. So, you know, this is something that I think helps the community, and the best part about food trucks, I think, is this has become a real community event. And this is something this Oktoberfest is, we're hoping to make that same kind of event in the fall as well.
I think it sounds great, I fully support it.
So that we do have to add maybe one more requirement, so Mark. Chief Newell has weighed in on this and he thinks you need two detail people. We can talk about it tomorrow, as far as that goes, but he, he's got a pretty good case to be made that.
Okay.
Given how many people we think you're gonna have, this could be well-attended, that he thinks you need two.
Well, that would actually, I mean, that would increase the cost. It would be very good news, though, the more people that we can have, the better. As I said, I think one of the big goals of this is to create yet another event that really builds community here.
No, I think it's a great idea, the food trucks are beautiful too, so, and Michael, thank you guys for doing what you're doing too. I hope you guys are successful as far as your piece of it too.
Right. Okay, well, I'll look forward to hearing from Chief Newell.
One question, which day of the week is the nineteenth?
It's the Sunday.
Yes.
And we are gonna have a linkage to the Patriots game, because I know there's just a lot of interest in the Patriots now.
After last week, yeah, everybody's gonna be interested.
I moved that we approve a one-day liquor license for the Rotary Club Oktober event.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say, you know, congratulate Al, I understand he's going to be delivering eleven thousand pounds of, of produce. And we only told people he was gonna deliver six thousand, so we may have to.
Well, I think that it's, he's gonna do a lot, it's a record, but it's not eleven, is it? Is it eleven?
We're that close, we're three hundred pounds short so far.
Oh, well, then it is eleven, so that's double what you've ever done before, almost.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, it was all about that, that donation that Rotary made. So, you know, if you make another one, I'm gonna feel obliged to double again.
Well, we, we, we really appreciate that he's doing so well. What I'd also say is that there's a number of the children of Rotary members who actually work with Al as well, so it's great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. So now we're gonna talk about the special town meeting, finalize the warrant. Jim Haggerty, our town clerk is here. Um, Jim Haggerty, our town clerk, is here, and he wanted to give us some information about his planning and logistics for the town meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Jim Haggerty, town clerk, uh, special town meeting will be on Monday, the twenty-seventh, starts at six-thirty. Uh, we're expecting a pretty big crowd. Be held in the auditorium of the Trotter Middle School. In addition, we will, uh, as has been our custom, we will have a room available for parents with children to remain with their children in the cafeteria. In addition, we'll have seating available in the gymnasium if the cap, if the, uh, capacity has exceeded, the fire capacity exceeded in the, uh, auditorium. I will set that up as well. Um, it will not be optional. People can't just decide, I wanna sit in the gym. Uh, it's when the moderator says, uh, the room is full, at that point, people will be directed to the gym. Um, people will not be able to bounce back and forth. That's a logistical nightmare. And if we use the clickers to take a vote, we want to ensure the integrity of the clickers, that, uh, one person, one clicker, and that's all she wrote. All right, so that'll work out pretty well. Parking's gonna be tricky. Potentially, uh, if we packed all three of those rooms, you're talking the better part of nine hundred people. We'll have seating for that many people, uh, which would be a wonderful problem to have, okay? The number of legal parking spaces at Trotter is a hundred and ninety-eight, and at Neary's one fifty-four, so you're talking three fifty, give or take. Uh, when I say legal, those are the marked spaces, which will certainly fit another hundred cars in, uh, as people double park along the sides and so forth. So I don't think that's that big a deal, but we encourage people to come in. From my, um, concerns, so the people that are in the auditor, assuming in the gymnasium and in the, if we, uh, check that, in the auditorium and in the gymnasium, will have the same rights and privileges that they have, uh, in the auditorium. There'll be, uh, microphoned and, uh, cameras to be able to, excuse me, audio to hear for what's taking place in the gymnasium, in the auditorium. There'll be, uh, mics for them to speak as well. There'll be cameras set up for the moderator to see the people at the microphone, a camera for the moderator to get a wide-angle view of the audience as well. I recently attended a town meeting in another town, and they had a second room, but surprisingly, they had audio and video into the room, but if somebody wanted to participate, they had to walk a pretty long way to get back into the other room, and I kinda scratched my head at that. I thought they dropped the ball on that. Uh, but in any case, for us, it's seamless, and the moderator will have two confidence monitors at the ground. In addition, I'll be in contact with the deputy moderator in those rooms by radio to alert the moderator that somebody is at a microphone, so we can cover the base on that. That should work out pretty well. We have analyzed, uh, how we have handled busy check-ins, uh, Trotter, actually, at the auditorium, at, uh, Algonquin, for one. Uh, and we've analyzed how we've had and when we've had backups of people coming in. Like any event, we tend to have people come at the last minute kind of a deal. So we've streamlined our process, and we'll break it up into two steps. Basically, when somebody comes in, you'll check in initially, um, get a little slip of paper, and then go proceed to a second step where you'll get your wristband and your clicker. So we will have, uh, about thirty, thirty-some odd people helping us in this process. But we expect it'll be a much, much smoother process for check-in. That should work out pretty well. And that's pretty much about it. Um, we would ask that people get there early, um, if possible. One of the things I've suggested to the moderator, I observed when I was up at Lincoln at their town meeting, um, here in the spring, the special town meeting, they had a big crowd, and they had a delay at the start of the meeting. But the moderator, she did a terrific job. One of the things she did is that the first article was the article everybody came for, in anticipation for this election, for this town meeting, it'll be the first article, it'll be the big one. She recognized there were people that hadn't checked in, but rather than delaying the meeting, she asked consent to the hall to jump to less controversial items on the articles. She did the administrative stuff and sort of, you know, not consent type list, but things that really weren't that, uh, hot topics, which I would, uh, suggest would be a good way to handle this meeting as well. There were some other articles on this agenda that if we have a backup, instead of waiting for the last person to check in, um, I think it's, you know, fair to move along on those issues. That's pretty much about it. If you have any questions, may I let it go, but what I wanted to get to the public is, uh, we will have capacity for all the people that want to come. I would ask people to check in early, and, um, we'll do the best to make it as smooth as we can.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions?
Only anticipation for one night, right? Only one night for everything we have to cover?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I just can't see it coming.
Early, surely, um, this is not gonna be on one night. Okay.
Yes. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay. So, um, tonight, we gotta finalize and sign the warrant. There's a couple articles also that we, haven't voted yet, that I think we should vote. Um, but first, um, the cemetery commission article, which is article three in the current draft. I wasn't there, but I know Kathy was, and the advisory committee had a bunch of questions about this, mainly having to do with the composition, you know, after this committee is formed, wha- what is its purpose? Who appoints it? What would their terms be, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? And these aren't really answered by the current article, because it's really just intended to be a home rule petition to start the process. But with all that said, I know Marguerite reached out to Bill Kundif earlier this week about how he wants to proceed, 'cause remember, it's really was his suggestion of doing this, and he suggested probably best to just pull it from this warrant and, uh, get the answers to all these questions, just do it at the annual. There's no compelling, you know, strong urgency to do this. So, is every, everyone okay with that? That would adjust the numbering of the articles. No, Al, you're okay with it? All right. Tim, did you want us?
I'm gonna encourage you to do exactly that.
Okay, all right.
So Tim was at the meeting, and embarrassingly, knew more than, um, select board did. So, yes, we definitely should pull this till we can, you know, we, we just, we haven't talked about this in a long time. So we need to get back to it and really talk about how we're doing this in all the details, so we can answer questions when asked.
All right, so article three, we're just gonna take off. Um, the remaining articles that we haven't voted yet are article one, the, uh, highway major retail use, and that's really just, we waited to get the final version, which we now have, right? Okay. Yes. And then article four, um, I think we already just voted earlier tonight about Atwood. All right. The hearing room funding, um, we still have just a sum of money. Um, same thing with the SAM budget. It's, it says just the sum of money, that with, the amount of money will be specified in the motion. And that the other one, which still remains to vote, which I think we can vote tonight, is the ADU article. Um, and then we should also, of, of the articles that I have marked as select board sponsored, we should talk about who wants to do the presentation or make the motion on them. The ones that I've got are Atwood remediation. Oh, also, um, you know, the Atlantic article. Uh, Atwood remediation, golf revolving fund, the market adjustment pay, the person, the, uh, personnel board will, will do the, the SAP adjustments, right? Okay. Hearing room fund, SAM, and then the governance committee. All right, so, um, first, we want to just proceed to take a vote on the Atl- Atlantic article, article one.
Well, before we do that, can we talk about what advisory wants to know before they finalize their votes? So, talk about their votes.
Sure.
And there's, they've got some questions. Um, so they voted to support, um, one and two. Three, they didn't vote, because we couldn't answer the questions. Um, four and five, they voted to, you know, so everything was unanimous so far, so unanimously supported that one. Article six, which was a vacation, that was a six-one vote. Seven and eight, they voted unanimously to support both of those. Um, nine and ten, which is the, um, one is the SAM budget, and the other is ADU. Um, they're gonna talk to planning board at their next meeting, which is next week, so they'll get that one voted. And then eleven, this is, so this is what I wanted to talk about, um, as far as what they want to do. So Tim Martel proposed that this be changed, so that town meeting picks the people on the committee. Now, he didn't necessarily get a, um, a lot of support from advisory for that, but that was his, um, um, suggestion, so I thought at least throw it out there as far as something he'd like to see. Sounded a little chaotic to me, um, to, to do that, but he did say, can, you know, at least take it back to select board and throw it out there, so that's what I'm doing.
Okay, maybe if we just start with the easiest stuff first.
Yeah.
So. 'Cause that's, that's the last one, so we can-
Yes.
So for the first one, article one, are you prepared to vote on it?
Um, I, with a, with a amendment, um, to it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, what is the amendment that you propose?
The amendment is, remember when we referred this to the planning board, the body that is supposed to, um, go through the special permit process and issue that was the ZBA. That's in the town code. Um, but they're supposed to do it. They already do every other use in the IP zone one through fifteen, so that's what was in the original draft that went to planning board. They changed that and changed the approving, um, authority to the planning board. I would, um, make a motion to change it back to the ZBA.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion here? Yep, yep, Tim?
I'm just wondering what the, if we lose any support from other boards by changing anything at this point, and what the benefit or downside would be, 'cause I'm not fully aware of that part of the process, to understand it and have, uh, enough informed decision at this exact moment.
So I'm just gonna say, I, I am very sympathetic to this amendment, but I'm not gonna vote for it, simply because I think it's interjecting something right at the last minute, where there is already a long hearing process that went out of the planning board. Um, so I, I just think that there's a process we followed, and this is coming right at the last minute, so. My, you know, that's, that's how I feel on this, but I, we'll, we'll just take-
So let Al and I add some context here. Um, first of all, I have talked to the chair of the ZBA, and they are, um, not in favor of the planning board taking what is their role in this. Um, they did not have a discussion with the planning board. Um, the chair believes that all the members would support, um, the amendment that I just made. So there's that. Um, second, I believe, Tim, kind of to address your concern, that if we don't do this, um, we are at risk of, um, having an amendment, um, proposed at town meeting by some, um, pretty credible people that town meeting listens to. So I think we've got a much bigger danger not doing this than, um, than leaving it the way it is, and I just think it's wrong. Um, the, the reasons the planning board gave for doing this, Mr. Maria said, well, um, you know, the ZBA is appointed and we're elected. Well, I think that is a, um, um, disparaging thing to say about the ZBA. ZBA we've got right now is very good, so I don't agree with that. I think you can make an argument the other way, too, if you wanted to. Um, but the, the code says the ZBA does this. Um, the idea that the planning board could do it quicker, I don't think that's correct. Um, ZBA will do this very efficiently, like they, they, they do most of their business, and it belongs there. Um, so I just think, um, so Andrew, I hear you. But we just got it back. Um, so I, I, we gave it to them with ZBA in there, and I think we should leave ZBA in there as the special permit body.
So I, I, I agree, um, for a different set of reasons. There may be merit to having the planning board be, uh, the grantor of special permits in this type of circumstance. But this is an inappropriate vehicle for doing that. If the planning board believes there is merit, they should bring a clean bill with one subject, rather than, uh, doing the time-honored legislative, uh, thing of, of tacking something on to something that they believe will pass. There is, you know, bring a, a, a clean article. Now, I will point out that when, the last time the, the planning board brought something like this forward, it failed at town meeting. And so, um, I think this is potentially, there's gonna be some controversy, regardless of how we, we, we do this. But, um, this, if we are, if the merits of this are to be debated, they should be debated extensively, because this is a substantive, uh, change in our process. The purpose of this article is to change the zoning bylaws, not to change the process by which we administer zoning bylaws. And as a consequence, uh, I, I, I think we lead the original wording in. It, it, you know, it was not vetted through us, it wasn't vetted through the ZBA. Uh, there's a right way to do this, and this isn't it.
So just, um, Tim, just as some kind of context for this, the default in our bylaw is this, the zoning board of appeals is the special permit granting authority. So where, where the bylaw is otherwise silent, the, the ZBA decides special permits. Over the last five, six years, pretty much every major zoning article that has passed has changed it so that the planning board is the special permit granting authority. That includes like the, uh, adaptive reuse bylaw, the downtown district, they're all, they're, they're all there, and I, because I originally served on the ZBA rather than the planning board, I'm more partial to the ZBA in this, but I just feel like if this helps move this along, I'm fine with it. And so that's where I stand.
So it doesn't bother you that the other fifteen uses are gonna go to-
No, it does bother me, but, um, you know, Al's concern about log-rolling and having compromises to get things done, I don't really have any problem. Okay, so I think Marty Houlihan has her hand up. And Mimi, all right. So, Mimi, why don't you go first?
Um, thank you, Andrew. I'm surprised to hear, uh, the two members of the, uh, select board say this, who claim to be the most business-friendly and to make things easiest for businesses, and have often complained about how, uh, difficult permitting is. Um, to have two different permitting authorities would require um, a butter notification sent out to everybody within three hundred feet twice. Uh, a legal ad sent out twice, and then schedule meetings at two different boards. The ZBA has meets once a month, the planning board meets every other week. This use requires a site plan. If the planning board's the special granting authority, we can do one consolidated hearing, one butter notification, one legal notice, one consolidated hearing. And as Andrew mentioned, there are several parts of the zoning code, downtown district, village business di- district adaptive reuse, low-impact development, common driveway, ma- major residential development, commercial, large-scale, ground-mounted, solar, those are all, um, planning board is special granted, uh, special permit granting authority. And we have been in hearings, um, so I'm surprised to hear this now, and the ZBA has been sent this bylaw all along and have never commented on it. So thank you.
All right, and Marty?
Uh, yeah, so thank you very much. Um, I, too, am surprised by this last-minute suggestion. Um, Mimi stated the point, but I just wanted to reiterate that the downtown district, one seventy-four dot eight one two, section C, is permitted uses by special permit from the planning board. Business Village, section one seventy-four dash ten point one, major si- site plan, again, by special permit from the planning board. The MBTA overlay, uh, site plan by planning board. And again, like, I think it's just for the, the, what I want to clarify, Kathy, is you keep saying that the industrial park zoning, we've eliminated that, um, that bylaw, because we've expedited it for this purpose, so we eliminated it from this special town meeting. So the only use right now is this specific highway retail use that Atlantic management is coming forward with. Like any major development, such as downtown district, business village, MBTA overlay, and all the other ones that Mimi spoke to, it only makes sense to be consistent in the way that the town has voted for a streamlined process through special permit through the planning board. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Is there any further discussion about this? So we've had a motion, a second. So are ready to vote on it? So this was, and, and um, Kathy, your amendment, there's two places in the article where the planning board is the special permit granting authority. The first in the first paragraph would be for the kind of principal permit for the anchor tenant, and then in the paragraph in the bottom, um, there's also kind of a the, uh, supporting retail use permit you can get. So you would make them, you, you would be looking to make them for both, right?
Yes.
All right, so, um, motion was made and seconded, so all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, motion fails. So with that, I move that we, uh, support a town meeting, article one. Um, so with that, I move that we uh, support a town meeting, article one.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Um, how did you vote? Oh, alright. Um. So it's four, zero, one? Alright. Um. Okay, the golf course, we voted that. Um. The hearing room. To vote to appropriate. Nope. Yes, we voted we support the um, Atwood remediation, right? And I think it was, it was unanimous, okay. Yes, from free cash, okay. Article eight. Um, the only reason why I haven't voted this yet was we had waited to see if we're gonna have a number to insert there. I, uh, Jay Montio talked to me uh, before this meeting. Apparently MTC is meeting tonight. So um, they're still working on this, but um, hopefully at least a week before. You have any update on this, Mark, or?
No, I don't. I, I hope that uh, Jay was hoping that there would be some clarity, maybe some decision this evening. So we should know more hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, so. Um, no, no. So I think by our, our next meeting is on the twenty-first, right? Hopefully we'll at least have that information. We can, we'll know the motions so that, you know, one time it's town meeting, someone says they didn't like seeing, you know, the wording here and then just having the motion at the last minute save the amount of money. So maybe our, we'll try to buy the meeting on the twenty-first. Um. Uh, find out the amount of money that we're gonna move for and then put that up on the website. So at least that's available to people beforehand.
Can we do anything tonight to support this with the uh, idea that the number will come forward between now and our next meeting? Hopefully it will come forward between now and our next meeting that we don't have to necessarily-
Yeah. Okay, so I move that the board appro- uh, support a town meeting, article eight.
Uh, second.
All those in favor? Okay, and for the same reasons, article nine. Kathy, are you gonna take the lead at getting the, the number for the um, motion?
Nine is derived from eight, so you gotta get eight done, then you know what's left over.
Okay.
So.
So yes. Alright, I move that the board support a town meeting, article nine.
Second.
All those in favor? The last one, article ten.
I'm sorry, one quick clarification and maybe this is for Kathy, um, is this a should it be um, fiscal year twenty-five? Or twenty-six, South River Access Media Operating Budget? Should we be specifying the in the language?
Okay, so you're talking about adding that to article nine?
Yeah, I'm just wondering of the wording. I know that um, you and I have had conversations saying, okay, well, that's for this year and then at the annual, we need to do something for next year.
Um. I wouldn't put that there because they've got a different fiscal year than we do. Um, it, we're just trying to, they haven't had an allocation for-
No, under- understood. I just didn't know if we needed to specify if this language works.
It works fine with me.
Okay, fine, okay, never mind.
And they will be back in the spring from this point on to, to ask for a normal allocation.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions about article ten? I know it's a lot of text, but it really simply just revises the existing town zoning bylaw regarding accessory dwelling units, which I think are currently called accessory apartments.
And do you know that for a fact, Andrew?
Tim, let us say yes. So I'd, I'll take that as a yes.
I don't think he's saying yes to me.
Yes.
To me?
Saying, yes, it's currently called apartments.
Okay, so my question, Andrew, you just made a statement that this is doing nothing but updating definitions, et cetera, and we know that for a fact?
Um, I'll, I'll, the only caveat I'll have to this is there was some change in the wording from like the last week, which, because I don't have a red line, I, I have, I haven't, I, I haven't followed what the last change was, but from the, the meeting which I attended, I was satisfied that basically, right, under state law now, you can get an accessory dwelling unit by right if it's nine hundred square feet or smaller. So this is just updating, and I'm sure some, if anyone's from the planning board here is cor- correct, if I'm wrong, if I say something wrong, just let me know. But this is just going through each of the different districts where this would be permitted and inserting into the language about that district. You, you can do this. This isn't allowed um, by right use. And then, and then, okay, so then for an accessory dwelling unit above the state law dimensional standards, which I think is nine hundred square feet, you can get that through a special permit. You first need to get to the, you go to the border, and this looks very similar to the existing process. Um. So it's basically just saying that and it's laying out some, you know, pretty basic criteria. The habitable floor area of the accessory unit shall not exceed twenty-five feet of the habitable floor area. There's no other accessory dwell unit on the lot. Um, et cetera. So like Al, you're concerned from the last time where there are a bunch of kind of discretionary criteria about it. Though, I don't see those here anymore. And then, I don't know, maybe Marnie can, or um, Mimi can summarize this better than I can, but long and short of it, I, I was satisfied that this was really just updating the town bylaw to reflect the state law, but not really imposing any new restrictions or anything like that. What, you wanna, okay, come to the- Uh, okay, um. So we got two hands raised? Okay, so Mimi, do you wanna go, go first?
Uh, yes, thanks again, Andrew. Um. You were correct, it's just aligning with the state law. It's adding the by right uses to um, all the districts where uh, single family uses um, are allowed. So it removed accessory apartments from the industrial park because it's not a single, single family zoning district. Um. The only, in its, the special permit is exactly the same. The only difference is that it removed the cap that we used, the five percent cap on ADUs, which um, until recently, no one paid attention to anyway. So if the purpose is to increase ADUs, we thought that the cap was not helpful and that was something the uh, ZBA agreed with the last time.
So, so what I think that's referring to, and maybe Tim can explain, under the existing bylaw, there is some kind of artificial cap on the number of accessory apartments that could be permitted. It's defined as some formula based on the total number of single family residences that were in the town in nineteen seventy-nine or something like that. It, it has not made a lot of sense. So this, that makes the good change of getting rid of that cap.
Okay, so that's a substantive change.
Yes. Um, Marnie?
Yeah, I think Mimi hit it. Um, we've provided, um, well, we can provide online. Um, the deck is completed, literally um, uh, before and after, original language and then proposed. And so all the key points, I'll just run through. A new definition has been added, the, an ADU accessory dwelling unit to replace accessory apartment. It's been defined the way the state defines it. Um. We have included the size limit that the state by right has, that it may not exceed the nine hundred square feet or half the size of the primary dwelling. We've updated all those difference uh, di- districts. Um, references to ADUs have been added or updated in multiple zoning districts. The residential, business village, business highway, industrial, scientific, professional and downtown to reflect that nine hundred square foot threshold. We've removed outdated language. The industrial park district, as Mimi noted, since there's no single family dwelling allowed there. Um, special permit requirements um, has maintained all the same language. All, all that we say is that anything um, that's not by right, so exceeds nine hundred square feet or greater than half square, uh, gross square footage can continue to go to the zoning board for the special permit process. And then um, the adaptive reuse clause has been updated, um, uh, which basically um, again removes uh, section four, there's four sections in the app, adaptive reuse. Um. Which say, stated specifically, the number of accessory apartments approved under the section shall not be subject to mass general law one seventy-four dash nine B four, which limits the number of accessory apartments that can be permitted. So we've just eliminated that language. So um, it is very administrative in nature and no other um, changes have been made.
Is there?
Tim?
Yeah.
Is there any short term language in here like there was at the previous town meeting? Is any of that um, been kept in this version or is that now no longer uh, in this at all?
It, is that for me to answer?
Sure, I, I, and I don't, what do you mean by short term language?
There was a short term running language in the last uh, revision that went to town meeting, um.
That's all been completely taken off the, the docket. Um, since it was loud and clear at town meeting, they just wanted to maintain the mass general law. We really, the purpose for this entire um, administrative section was to clarify when and how, um, sorry, it was to improve clarity, ensure state law alignment and modernize the local zoning language to support appropriate sized ADUs. So we've not added any other characteristics or requirements into that process.
Okay.
Okay, um, are we ready to vote on it? So I move that the board support a town meeting, article ten.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Alright.
I'd say.
Okay. Alright, um. Article eleven, the town government structure committee article. Um, Kathy, you suggested that, that advisory committee had some, oh yeah, Tim Martell.
Martell specifically, so out of respect for him, I said I would bring it forth. Um, I don't think, um, is Marcy online? Um, I don't necessarily think that others, um, yeah, if she'll come over. Don't draft her. I don't think that others necessarily agree. I mean, he was an interesting idea, um, to do. It just seemed a little unwieldy to, I think, most of us. I've never seen us do that at town meeting, actually pick members-
Yeah, I think the, the question is, is how would it work?
It wouldn't-
There are, there, 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 there are other town meetings that do appoint subcommittees, but they're typically uh, representative town meetings as opposed to, uh, uh, you know, open town meetings. Um. I, I think the question of who appoints the committee is germane. I'm, as you know, I, I'm, I, I, I would prefer to have the moderator appoint the committee. Um, because anything, you know, that, that we do is going to naturally be viewed as suspect. Um, and, but I, I think this is an important thing to do.
I, I agree with you too, and I, I'm not welded to select board, um, doing it. Um, if we think that the moderator would um, be looked at more favorably, I, I'd change it, but I don't think it should be a partial partial. Um, where we appoint three, you appoint four.
No, no, that's-
It should be one or the other.
No, uh, I think the idea that it should not be any current elected official is highly desirable.
I'm of the same view. I, I uh, don't have-
But to, to finish the thought with Tim, Martell's idea, I just, I said things like, well, what if um, somebody's there, sits there and turns to their neighbor and says, I nominate you, and they go, what are you talking about? I don't wanna do this. Um, so it just doesn't sound to me like it is a practical way to do this. Um, but I do respect the fact that he um, wanted us to talk about it, so um, we have. Um, so I'm happy if we think moderator's going to um, be more favorably received. I have no idea. Um.
Yeah, the only thing I add to that, I was at that meeting too, was we talked about other options, which may or may not be viable, but one of them was like, maybe you need to get so many signatures to be taken seriously and then you get voted on in a situation like that, or maybe it would be on a ballot question instead. I don't know if any of those have any additional merit to this, but those were just other avenues and an opportunity of maybe making it more democratic in that sense, but it was the idea that somebody would have to kinda do the same process, an elected person kinda go through.
I, this sounds to me, it's either, should be either the select board or the moderator. The other things are just so complicated. Remember, any recommendation this committee comes forward is, still has to just be voted on by town meeting in the usual process.
Right, I mean, and that's the point I don't think is getting across.
Yes.
Committee's not gonna make any decisions. They're gonna look at things and come forth with a list of recommendations. If anyone has ever looked at the org chart that we have for this town, they would agree, it's probably worth looking at again. Um, as I think Al pointed out, we haven't done this in ten or fifteen years. And those committees were appointed, I don't, don't remember who appointed the town manager committees.
I think it was the select board.
Okay, anyway, so I'm not married to select board. Um, I just, I agree, it's a good idea. It's time to look at this and they, um, we're not making any decisions. We're just trying to get a committee to take a look at things that they think might be worthwhile considering.
I mean, one of the things we could do is we could just go forward with what we have now, with the select board being the appointing authority. And then depending on the discussion, right? If that becomes controversial, right? We could-
Amend it.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I would prefer to lead with the moderator.
Lead, do, change it to moderator?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, Tim, what do you think?
I can take it or leave it. Um, I don't really have a, a strong push one direction or the other. I think at the end of the day, this is still an advisory in nature article and we're just trying to keep the town involved in the decision making. So I want that to be clear from anybody listening, that this is coming to town meeting because, you know, it's one of those things like the um, the uh, rec, the regional dispatch, you know, was something that this board decided on, but it was something that you wanted to have the town involved in the process. It's the same process here. But as for who appoints, I'm, I could go either way.
Okay, Kathy? You wanted to change it to the moderator?
Um, so yes, I'll make a motion to change the appointing authority to the moderator from the select board. Second.
Okay, so, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor? Alright, all those opposed? Okay, so, we changed it. Moderator, alright, so now, uh, what do you say? Yeah, we should- Okay. So, so I move that the select board appoint, I'm not, sorry. It's getting late. I move that the select board support a town meeting, article eleven, with the amendment that we just voted.
Second.
All of them favor? Okay.
Did you vote to support the article?
Yes, that we just did, yeah.
And I, you gonna do speaking roles?
Yes.
Not to take the do.
Alright, so I so, uh, uh, does this sound right, that of the now ten remaining articles that the select board would, would be, be presenting seven of them? Atlantic, Atwood remediation, golf revolving fund, the funding for the market adjustment pay, the hearing room and sandwich go together, and then the governance committee.
Yep.
So for the first one, uh, does anyone have any interest in being the presenter for the first article?
I've got a suggestion.
Hmm, yeah.
Um, um, Al, I think you would be the best person to do that one.
Alright, I think that's, I second that. I think Al would do a good job. Alright, and are there other, other remaining ones? I mean, I could volunteer to do the governance committee because I was involved in it with Al, of working on the proposal. That'll be late at night, which presents a little bit of a challenge.
You just have to talk fast to get it over with quick.
Al, you wanna do Atwood?
Uh, sure.
Um.
I wanna do two golf courses. I wanna do eight and nine because they're related. Same person should do both of those. You should talk about them both at the same time. And then, um, I'd like to do the market adjustment seven. And I know that's been a hog.
So that's, now we have, okay, there, where we have, usually we split it up so that each member gets to do one. We've got uh, Tim, is there one that you wanna present or?
I mean, the clo- the one that I'm closest to was um, the, this room upgrade. I mean, the clo- the one that I'm closest to was, um, the, this room upgrade, but if Kathy wants to do them together, then I'm I won't force anything.
Well, it's, the reason I say they should be done together, you gotta explain the source of the funds and why, so that's why I say they should be done together, they're all coming from the PEG, so I was just gonna do the whole thing, explain PEG, and then what we, cause we've never done this before, but I don't, I mean, if you wanna do, um.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay, I don't have to have my.
It's fine, you do the hearing room and, um. I would like to do golf.
Okay.
That was my idea, I might wanna do golf, because I know the numbers, um, that I wanna talk about. Okay, so.
Alright, so how about Tim, you're already, or Kathy does the Sam and the, um, hearing room together?
Yeah, I don't need a moment, so I'm, I'm okay with.
There'll be way more.
Hearing room, it's fine with me, so, um.
I'm, I'm not pushing hard one way or the other, if you feel like you'd like to do it, because it makes more sense, I.
It's not even that I'd like, it's just related, um, and I did the contract for Sam, so it's just easy, but.
There'll be, there'll be other things to do at the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I'm okay if Kathy wants to do it, that's all I'm saying.
And I'm okay if you wanna do it, so.
Okay, so, so Al's gonna do the Article one and the Atwood Remediation. And Kathy, golf, market adjustment pay, hearing r- room funds and Sam, and I'll do the governance committee.
Okay, then we've got the, um, market adjustment.
I thought you said you were gonna do that.
Sure, okay. And then who's doing the, um?
The rest of them are the planning board or personnel board, I think. Unless I missed one.
Al.
Al.
And he's also doing Atwood?
Yes. Okay, I think that's it. The pre-town meeting is on the eighth, was that tomorrow?
Yeah, and it's six thirty, not six, right? Cause who's going, I can, I'm, I'm gonna dinner in town.
I, I have a conflict with the Tricentennial Committee. You're gonna go? Okay. Well, we, we still have two other things left on the agenda here, okay.
Well, hold on, Al, you're the one doing the presentation, um, that's the most important thing, can you go to the special town, can you go to the pre-town meeting and make sure Paul knows what you're doing?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just remind me when it is.
Tomorrow. At six thirty.
Pardon?
Senior Senator tomorrow at six thirty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Vanessa? Are you getting like, the, the copy is ready for us to sign?
Yeah.
Well, we can't, we've gotta remembered, before leaving here, we have to sign them. Okay, that's all taken care of.
Mark, are you going to pre-town meeting? So can you just tell Paul? Well, don't tell. Let him know that my intention is to talk about eight, the, the two peg articles at the same time, it'll still be separate votes. Right, separate motions, but I'm gonna combine the whole thing, um, into one discussion.
Okay, um, two remaining items on the agenda. The golf course irrigation project bid, as you read the, um, memo came in ridiculously over, uh, the amount that was budgeted. And the recommendation is to reject the bid and start over again.
Fifty percent.
Yeah. Alright, um.
But Mark, you're going to find out why the other thirty didn't.
Yeah, I had, I had a conversation with, um, with Bill Kunda this afternoon, um, you know, we had a tremendous amount of people who took out plans on this. Um, and so, um, you know, Bill is gonna be, um, you know, reaching out to the plan holders and finding out why they didn't bid, there's some indication that it may have been the timing of the project. Um, and so we're going to, but we want that feedback, so that when we put this out a second time, we know that this is gonna come in the way that we need it to.
But we're now two years beyond when it was approved. So, you know, the further we get out, the less likely we're going to bring it in under.
Yeah.
It's been allocated.
So, I move that the board, uh, approve the recommendation for the golf course irrigation project board, bid award, which is to reject the bid.
Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay. You think we should accept the bid that's two hundred forty thousand dollars over, or?
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm just not crazy about the whole business.
Okay.
So did you vote to accept the bid? Accept the bid? Okay, alright.
Okay, so we voted four to one to reject.
Okay.
Okay. You wanna do the vote again, or? Okay, alright, I'm voting to the I know, sorry. Okay. I, I move that we approve the recommendation for the golf course irrigation project bid award, which is to reject the bids.
Second.
All those in favor? It would not be a fiscally conservative thing to do to vote for.
Really?
Okay, yeah, and then, um, I don't know if we just wanna kick this over to the next meeting, or just to start to ta- talk about an annual town meeting date?
Who's on the Zoom? She's from the golf course committee.
Oh, okay. You wanna bring her over?
I'm not sure if you can hear.
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, okay, um, I was just wondering how long it will take, uh, I know the golf course needs to, the irrigation project done. And I realized that the bid may have come in, uh, too high and that there weren't any other bids, but how long will it take to put the, oh, for bid again?
I would be, that's where Bill would be in the best position to answer that question, I mean, it also depends on, right, what feedback he gets from the people who polled but didn't submit a bid, right?
Correct, I mean, I, I would anticipate that we'd have this back out to bid in the next two to three weeks. You know, the bids are pretty good, we just need to understand what we need to tweak in them in order to make this a more attractive bid, so that we get multiple bidders and something a little more competitive.
Oh, okay.
It's already October, um, if we think it's timing that causes, why do we think going right back out is going to change that?
Well, but if you're going right back out and you're giving them until April to put this in, it's a little bit bigger window for, for somebody who, I think it gives more people an opportunity to put it on their schedule, rather than saying, can you fit this in sometime before the end of the calendar year?
I mean, the reality is the ground freezes and December first, kinda.
Okay. So we have one le- thing left on the agenda, which is to discuss the annual town meeting date. It is getting late, do you wanna just, there's no rush, why we need to pick an annual town meeting date tonight, you wanna just start to talk about it, or just move it to the next meeting?
In March?
Can we punt it?
Pardon me?
Can we punt that to the next meeting?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in favor of punting.
I'm not saying punt it because of time, or because we're all tired, which I think we are, but, um, given we don't know where we're going with the school project, and given we don't know whether that school project is going to, I mean, it's probably still gonna be another special town meeting, I guess, but, um, someone tonight said it's gonna be on the annual town meeting warrant, which it probably is not, but if it were, then that would dictate in part when we do it, so I'd say, yeah, let's wait.
Okay. Alright, so with that, I think I'm gonna make a motion to enter into executive session. I move that the board enter into executive session per Mass General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, and not return to open session to review and approve executive session minutes from August nineteen, twenty twenty-five, exemption seven.
Second.
Again, this has needed the roll call vote, Dennington, aye?
And the aye?
Okay.
Ling, aye.
Most of the aye.